Hello?
Yes, we're ready.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us at this board meeting, March 20th. This is Jean Harrison, the board president. I am calling in. I am out on a medical disability, but I am, my brain is working, but that's about it. And the vice chair, Ed Sivak, is on travel with his work-related responsibilities, but he also is joining us on, at this board meeting. So I would like to, someone to bang the gavel for me and open this meeting of our board members. I would first like to give my appreciation to my colleague Barbara Hilliard, who will facilitate this meeting. But I am officially calling it to order and asking for Dr. Michelle King to join us with the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, Dr. Murray, President Harrison, members of the board and audience. It is my pleasure to introduce Dominique Dantzler, an eighth grader at Powell Academy of Military He is the grandson of Ethel Mangum, who proudly supports his ever endeavor. At school, he currently serves as Mr. Powell with a platform designed around academic success while at middle school. He is a member of the 100 Black Men of Jackson Mentee Program, the Alpha Phi Alpha Amp Up Mentee Program, Student Council, member of the Powell Drum Line, Powell Soccer Team, a former ambassador for the Mager Everest Academy for African-American males, the A Team. He attends Ferris Street Missionary Baptist Church, where he serves as an usher, member of the Brotherhood, and a member of the Youth Department, a very busy young man. When he grows up, he wants to be a mechanical engineer and earn a degree from Mississippi State University. He also would like to own several trucks in which he would manage a trucking company hauling supplies out of Atlanta, Georgia. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Dominique Dantzler.
May you please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for...
Thank you. And I would like to recognize his grandmother, Mrs. Mangum. Please, thank you for bringing him. Thank you. And our principal at Powell, Mr. Justin Green, thank you.
Ms. Hilliard, I have the introduction for our moment of inspiration. Madam President, Dr. Harrison, Cameron Tate is a native and resident of Jackson, Mississippi. He's currently the outreach minister at Daniel Memorial Baptist Church. Minister Tate has a heart for economic development, event planning for communities, and an even greater passion for Jackson. He attended Jackson Public Schools and Holmes Community College. Please welcome Minister Cameron Tate.
Just wanted to make sure I knew where I was supposed to be. Good evening.
Good evening.
It's an honor to be here with you all this evening. I'm going to set my timer for three minutes, because I was told two to three minutes. I'm a preacher, and so I don't want to hold you long. But I just want to give us a word of encouragement, something I have to often remind myself. You know, it is so easy, in our efforts, in our works, to seem as if we're really not making an impact. I don't know if you guys feel like me, but sometimes I feel like there's more work than there are results. And sometimes it feels like it's such a barrier to climb, and walls to climb, when you're dealing with different issues. And of course, I know you all see them, and I see them all the time, but my word of inspiration today would be to don't grow weary in well-doing. Scripture promises us that we'll receive a harvest of blessing if we don't give up. We're never promised that the work that we do is going to be easy, but we are promised that we'll see lasting fruit. And one of the things we have to do is we have to keep pressing forward, and every seed that we plant to realize it's going to grow into something beautiful one day. So it's easy a lot of times to wake up in the morning and think, "Man, I'm just doing the same thing every day, and talking to the same people, and going to the same places." But you have absolutely no idea the difference that you're making just by showing up. And you guys being so faithful to care about our school systems, and care about our students, and care about the future of the children that you serve day in and day out, I just want to remind you that it makes a difference. It makes a difference when we show up, and we're consistent, and we're faithful, and we're just the people that are determined to keep pressing even when we don't feel like it. Because we know that the greatest impact makes when we just keep pressing forward. When we just keep doing, and we keep doing, and we're plowing ground, and we're plowing ground, it will make a difference. So my encouragement, my inspiration is you keep your head up, don't get discouraged. The road gets tough, but when the road gets tough, we all know the saying, "The tough gets going." And I believe I'm looking at a bunch of tough people here today. If not, you wouldn't be here. So my encouragement, keep going, keep pressing, know that you're not alone, that's why we have each other. So link arms, and we'll get the job done. Thank you.
Minister Tate, if you could come back up here, please.
Thanks to Minister Tate, and also the young man for the pledge of allegiance. I believe we have a quorum, so we will move forward with the agenda. Attorney, do we have any public...
No, we don't.
None today, okay. Could we get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, as the agenda will be approved. Ms. Williams? Okay. Number four, reading and approval of the minutes. Is with, we will forego? Okay. Public participation, we don't have...
We need to vote on the adoption of the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need to vote on the acceptance of the agenda. Okay, could we have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved. No, we need to get the, they need to vote on the adoption of the agenda.
Okay.
The ayes and the nays.
Oh, they did vote on it?
They haven't yet. We just want to move the motion.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll go back. All right. Could we get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It has been moved in second to adopt the agenda as printed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The motion carries. All right, we're back on track. Reading and approval of the minutes. We have minutes for the 20th to 22nd February, March 1st, March 6th. Are there questions, additions, comments regarding the minutes? Could we have a motion to adopt the minutes?
I'm moving we adopt the minutes as distributed by Ms. Williams prior to our meeting.
Second?
Second.
It has been moved in second that we will adopt the, we will adopt the minutes as submitted by Ms. Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Now we are at public participation, you say, there?
I have no one who signed up to address you.
No one to sign. All right, we are down to item number six, the superintendent's report.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, community members. Tonight, we have just a couple of items, just out, start with B, with the cap. Currently, we are awaiting approval. It is our hope that the cap will be approved at the upcoming state board meeting, and so once that cap is approved, of course, we will move forward with having those items clear. So we're hopeful that that process will take place, I think, this week, but we'll keep the board abreast of what's happening with that situation. We wanted to update the board on advanced ed. This year, next fall, we will have an advanced ed visit, which is a very important part of the work that we do every so many years. So we wanted the board to be aware of what that, what that would look like, and so Dr. Vicky Davison will brief the board on the advanced ed update and that process.
Good evening. Good evening. Dr. Murray, members of the board, our audience, I wanted to provide you with an update regarding advanced ed, and it is an external accreditation organization that we are a member of. I know that we have been a member for 12-plus years. Ms. Miller, do you know exactly how long we've... Okay, okay. So it's been quite some time that we've been a member of the advanced ed organization. Next slide. We want to start the conversation regarding our upcoming external review, and I may refer to it as an engagement review. Advanced ed has gone through several changes within the last two years, and we want to ensure that the board trustees and the community are updated regarding this process. Advanced ed is a nonprofit organization that's committed to continuous improvement and ensuring that every learner reaches his or her full potential. The vision of advanced ed is to create a world for opportunities for every learner, and its mission is to lead and empower the education community to ensure that all learners realize their full potential. The process that advanced ed has established for schools and school systems is clear, and it's comprehensive. As I've, as I've mentioned, advanced ed has gone through quite a few changes within the last two years. Recently, I had the opportunity to be a part of an external review team earlier this month in another school district, and as I, as I gain knowledge about those changes, we'll be sure to update the board. But we want to be clear that this process that we're going through is based upon research and best practices. They look at standards and performance factors related to schools, as well as school systems nationally. Next slide. Our current status with advanced ed is accredited. We want to ensure that we continue that current status and ensure that our schools are providing the necessary needs, are meeting the necessary needs of our students. The engagement or external review process is conducted every five years. As Dr. Murray mentioned, next year will be the year that we are to begin or conduct our external review. We can select either the fall or spring of next year, November through December, or March through April. Once the academic calendar for next school year is adopted by the board of trustees, our next step is to ensure that we have an in-district review timeline, as well as our dates for our engagement review. And we will be updating the board regularly. District leadership is scheduled to attend training April 27th of this year. Next slide. Okay, are there any questions related to advanced ed and the process that will be following? And it's formerly known as SACSCAS. They merged in 2006. Uh huh.
Oh, Dr. Davison.
Yes, ma'am.
This will involve the entire curriculum, or...
Yes, it will. There are three performance factors that the external or engagement review team will look at, and that's leadership, learning, and resources. And within the learning performance factor, our entire curriculum and instructional practices, they will be reviewed.
What are the, this is Ed. What are the benefits of being accredited under this body?
Well, the, the main benefit of being accredited under advanced ed is, is knowing that we have an external organization that has come in to review our, our practices, and we, we can ensure that our, that we have a process in place for continuous improvement. With accountability and accreditation, this is a daily process that we have to review while we're in session in schools, and to ensure that we have the continuous improvement and the cycle that's necessary to ensure that we are providing our students with what they need, then we need that external organization or team to come in and tell us, not what we, to tell us what we're doing great, and to provide us with additional input and feedback for what we need to do to improve.
And what are the costs of being accredited?
The monetary, the monetary cost?
Well, monetary, staff time. I'm also trying to understand the difference between being accredited by this body and by, for example, the Department of Education.
Well, they are two different accrediting organizations. Again, advanced ed is a national organization, and the Mississippi Department of Education, of course, is our state organization that accredits us. Their standards, if you will, or performance factors are similar. Advanced ed addresses many of the standards of our state. However, our state does delve deeper into the operational and procedural practices that we have.
And what is the monetary cost? This is Jean Harrison.
The monetary cost is dependent upon the number of schools that we have. This year was approximately $60,000. This year was approximately $60,000 for our membership.
And, and time in the schools and staff time involved?
I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't...
Staff time involved.
Right. Dr. Sivak had asked earlier, the time associated, the time in schools, time with teachers and staff. We're always concerned about impending on instructional time, although I appreciate facts in this national work, but we are concerned about the time taken up with staff for this extra level of accreditation.
It will not be a lot of time and effort as it relates to additional time that staff will have to provide to complete this process. With the corrective action plan and the process that we're following through the Mississippi Department of Education, most of the work has already been done, or we're in the process of completing that work.
Any other questions, comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davison.
Thank you. Okay, next, we'd just like to announce that on March 24th, which is this weekend, from 9:00 to 12:00, we'll have a job fair at Cordoza Middle School, 3180 McDowell Road Extension. We'll be recruiting, of course, highly qualified teachers, hiring food service, maintenance, and transportation staff. We also will be offering, upon availability of funds, $2,500 signing bonuses for core subject areas that will be payable for a one-year commitment for grades 6 through 12 in the areas of English, science, math, and social studies. So we encourage all individuals in the listening audience and anywhere that are interested in teaching, we have positions, and we will be hiring this Saturday at the job fair.
You said that's at Cordoza?
Cordoza Middle School, 3180 McDowell Road Extension, from 9:00 to 12:00. And that's not only teachers, but food service, maintenance, and transportation.
Dr. Murray, what information should they bring with them, people who are interested in it?
Of course, a resume, certification, of course, if, if they are certified, that's extremely important, and just the willingness to, to work with, with our children, yes, ma'am. And we are, we will be offering positions onsite, so those, we'll be trying to, to hire a Saturday.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Okay, that is superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we are at information, action items, and approval of the final financial report. Ms. Miller?
Thank you.
Well, we have one.
Oh.
Is there, schools at risk?
Well, I skipped an item.
It should be the schools at...
Information only, okay.
Okay, okay. Just the, schools at risk, I think is the next...
Yeah.
Item, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Good evening again. We, as you all know, several of our schools are going through a process that, that's titled "The Schools at Risk." We have focused, priority schools, and this is, this is a categorization that's been given by MDE in an effort to support our schools that are in school improvement. So we are required by MDE mandate to provide an update to the board in these areas. We have, tonight, we will start that process. Of course, last board meeting, you all know, we approved the action plans, and moving forward, each month, we have to provide an update to the board, which is a part of the process. We have to provide an update in, for the schools at risk, as well as our priority, as our focus schools as well. And so tonight is our first night as part of that process. It will be a lengthy process, because we have a lot of schools. And so Dr. Merritt, again, will explain the process, and we will move through, through the, the information. If there are any questions, of course, we're giving each school two to three minutes to go through their presentation, I think we have about...
It's going to be 17, I believe.
Okay, so again, but if there are any questions, feel free to stop.
All right. Dr. Murray and board of trustees, and I first will begin with giving an overview of the classifications of schools. So the Mississippi Department of Education has classified our schools into four different categories. We have the focus schools, which are Title I schools performing at the, above the fifth percentile, but below the 16th percentile in the state. Or it's a Title I school receiving an accountability rating of an F that's above the 16th percentile in the state. And then we have our priority schools, which is, which are Title I schools performing below the fifth percentile in the state, and any high school with a graduation rate below 60%. And then we have schools at risk, and these are our schools who have, for the first time, a designation or a rating of an F. And then you have low-performing schools. And so the clarity that I think we want to provide, low-performing schools either fall in, as focus schools or priority schools. So they fall in one of the two categories. We do want to bring attention to Lake and Span. They are exempt from this process, being that they have an accountability rating of B, and so they are not required to do monthly updates. Those schools who have a D or C rating, focus schools, are required to give quarterly updates. And so tonight, you will hear from focus schools and schools at risk. We will begin with the elementary schools, and we will go in alphabetical order, and I'll give you those names if you would like, but it will be a total of 17 schools that you should hear from on tonight. And those schools are as follows: Brown Elementary, Dawson Elementary, French, Green, John Hopkins, Johnson, Lester, Marshall, North Jackson, Oak Forest, Raines, Walton, Wilkins, Willville Heights, and Kirksey. And those are our schools at risk. And then our focus schools that we'll present tonight are Van Winkle, is the elementary school, followed by Blackburn Middle, Powell, Powell Middle, and Sywell Middle, and Callaway High School. And we will begin the presentations at this time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To Dr. Murray, members of the board, and community members, and partners of Jackson Public Schools. My name is Zachary Hodge, principal of Brown Elementary School, and I would like to present to you all an update of what's going on at Brown as it relates to the School at Risk program. We had three major targets for our School at Risk plan. The first was to increase student proficiency in ELA, math, and science by providing evidence-based, rigorous Tier One instruction through small group instructional practices. Two, ensuring growth for all students via individualized learning plans and intense Tier Two and Tier Three interventions. And the third, increase teacher capacity through research-based professional developments, job alikes, as well as instructional feedback, learning walks, and peer observations. The data supports the following. We have done learning walks at successful schools, such as Key Elementary, administrators of first grade, third grade, and third through fifth grade. We visited Key Elementary and observed small group instruction in the areas of reading and math. Teachers were given specific targets to look for, that was the introductions of lessons, concrete modeling practices, and rituals and routines, as well as pacing. We are currently about to do, this month, a professional development on working on the work, high-quality student work, what does it look like? We will analyze research-based literature, as well as provide work samples of what high-quality work is versus what lower-quality work is. We have developed a rubric to evaluate the student work that we will analyze, and will be analyzing in the future, as well as provide ongoing feedback in our PLCs. For our data benchmark, in the beginning, using, utilizing STAR, the beginning of the year, our proficiency for reading was 40%, and it increased during our midpoint to 47%, which is a 7% increase. For STAR math, the beginning of the year data shows that we had a proficiency level of 59%, and it increased to 67%, which is an 8% increase. As we look at the ATI performance benchmarks, we had a slight decrease in that, we had a decrease of 1.24% in reading, and a large portion of that ventured from our third grade, who we are currently trying to find a certified teacher to support them. in that we had a decrease of 1.24 percent in reading. And a large portion of that ventured from our third grade, who we are currently trying to find a certified teacher to support them. However, our target comparing that to MAP is twenty percent. Currently, based off of our data, we are currently at 10.43 percent with the second benchmark. In math, our beginning benchmark proficiency was twelve percent overall. We have increased in that area to fourteen point seven five percent, which is a two point seven five percentage increase. Our target for our math, as it relates to MAP, is twenty percent. For our science, our target is fifty percent, as we compare the data to MAP. Currently, our beginning of the year, our first benchmark was thirty-six percent, and our second benchmark was a sixteen percent increase to fifty-two percent. Some of the things that we are doing to boost morale, will continue for our morale to be at a high point, as well as to promote positive learning, is each nine weeks, we have an honors program where we celebrate scholars who not only who not only make the honor roll and high honor roll, but we celebrate the successes of all students that show growth on their benchmark assessments, whether it be COAT, whether it be STAR, or whether it be our ATI. We celebrate their success. We also celebrate the success of our readers. AR is a big part of our plan. We celebrate all scholars who meet their AR goal. And in order to meet their AR goal, they must score a certain amount of points, as well as score an eighty-five percentile on their quizzes. As well as, we do PBIS celebrations bi-weekly for classrooms, and monthly celebrations school-wide for all students who meet their goals for PBIS. For community engagement, our most recent community engagement activity was the third-grade community chat where we being engaged for the gate success, where we brought parents in, showed them what the expectations are. We reviewed STAR data with them, as well as celebrated successes there. Our community chat that will be hosted this week is for third, fourth, and fifth grade, where we're gearing up for the state assessment. We're going to be showing parents how to analyze the data and providing them hands-on tools that they can use to prepare their children at home as we continue to prepare them at school. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge.
Good evening, Superintendent, Board President, members of the boards, as well as audience. My name is Vicki Conley, I'm the principal at Dawson Elementary School, where we educate every child, every day, in every way. Our school academic goal is to increase our proficiency, as well as our growth from a 265 F to a 332 C. In order to achieve this goal, some of the strategies that we will use is accelerated reader, classwork, fast-forward. We also have daily reading block, where all students are engaged in reading informational texts, and as well as a structure from eight o'clock to nine-thirty. We have daily fluency drills in math, and we have a bell-to-bell instruction that is aligned to state standards. The school leadership team, as well as the district leadership team, work together to revise the plan, as well as give insight on our plans for working towards the goal. We provide professional development in order to meet our goals based on a needs assessment, as well as the district professional development plan, also based on just observation, as well as the data. You will see it's color-coded as for a school, district, and MDE professional development. Our very next professional development will be March 27, and it will be done by MDE entitled Rigorous Center Activities. An update on our data compared to our benchmark assessments from December to March. Third-grade ELA decreased by two points. Math increased by eleven point six percent. Our ELA for fourth grade increased by fifteen percent. For fourth-grade math, increased by ten percent. Fifth-grade ELA increased nine point five percent. Fifth-grade math increased nine point three percent, and science increased by two point four percent. Our STAR beginning of the year for third through fifth grade, twenty-seven percent for the beginning of the year. Middle of the year, thirty-nine percent. We had a twelve percent increase, as well as math STAR data increased of five percent. In order to promote a positive learning environment for cultural, as well as PBIS activities, we are partnership with Ask for More Jackson. We have cultural learning walks. They come in and give us feedback on some of the things that we are doing and recommendations that we need to do. We also are partnership with Mississippi Public Broadcast. They come in and read to our children. We have our event, March Second Read Across America. We also have Saturday School. They Ask for More Jackson's support and fund that for us. We recognize our students for being hot. We call that here, being here on time, and they receive a bag of hot chokes. We have awards program, not only for students, but for staff and community partners, as well as parents who do a lot for our students and staff. We have Ask for More Arts, that we do arts integration across the curriculum. We have a PBIS store where our students are given points for good behavior, and they're able to go to that store to buy items. If it's a holiday, and we have Mother Day cards, a Christmas item they want to buy for their family, we provide that. We also have PBIS dance to promote our attendance. We have a staff other bunch for certified staff members, as well as classified staff members. In order to increase our attendance, I offer cash. Teachers are, names are put in a pot, and they actually receive cash for having perfect attendance. We have accelerated reader celebrations as well. Some examples of our parent and community engagement activities. We have community members to come in to judge our science fair. Mississippi Public Broadcast does a school-wide law for reading program. We also participate in MDE third-grade reading, third-grade parent meeting, as well as we have parent education night, that we invite the parents in and teach them some of the strategies to use at home. We have a site council, very active site council team member. We have VFW, the Veterans of Four Awards, that come in weekly for our book buddies, as well as tutoring. Our site council meets at least five times a year, and they review the school data and offer insights for school improvement. Our Month Six Attendance ADA, which is our attendance. Our students was ninety-four point three, and our staff was ninety-one point six percent. We do utilize our Title I funds to improve our goals, and we use that for technology instructional materials, intervention programs, professional development, and also I have hired an academic tutor. Any questions?
This is Ed. This may be a question directed at Dr. Murray. I was specifically looking at the staff ADA of ninety-one point six percent, which appears low. So, I was wondering if you could put that number in context with what maybe the district average is, what is the goal?
Well, we have a goal of ninety-five percent. There are ebbs and flows during the year. There are times when, for many reasons, where attendance kind of goes down. But we have an average of ninety-five percent, and there are, we encourage schools to take very deliberate efforts in increasing their ADA for staff. Because again, of course, if teachers are not there, then the students are not. They don't receive the type of instruction that we know they need. And so, again, ninety-five percent is the number that we strive for. We have a pretty good ADA overall for the year. We maintain that level of about ninety-five percent. And in some schools, it's much higher, you know, it's ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent. So, but again, during different times of the year, it's, it's, it, there are, you know, the, there's the winter season. Again, there are other times of the year when we have low, lower ADA than most months.
And also, I would like to add that when a staff member takes FMLA, that will drop the ADA, and we have had three at Dawson.
Say that again, I'm sorry, I didn't pick, I didn't catch all that.
She said ADA, I mean FMLA, Family Medical Leave. If a staff member takes FMLA, it adversely affects the entire percentage. And they have three staff members currently out on FMLA.
Okay, that, that, that helps. Thank you for that.
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I think protocol has been established. I'm Ms. Clark, Principal at French Elementary School. We have three goals. One is to increase our average daily attendance for our students to be ninety-five percent. For all students to follow the school-wide expectations and utilize tools for license in order to maximize behavior and decrease office referrals. And for students to make growth in all subject areas and increase proficiency in reading from seven point six percent to twenty percent. In math, eleven percent to twenty-five percent. Reading growth for all, thirty-four percent to sixty-five percent. Math growth for all, twenty-two point seven percent to fifty-five percent. Reading growth of our promising twenty-five to, from fifty percent to sixty-five percent. Math growth of the promising twenty-five, twenty-six point seven percent to sixty-five percent. And our science proficiency from fifty-eight point eight percent to sixty-eight percent, which would give us a three sixty-three, and we want to leave French Elementary as a C school. We've identified several professional developments for the month of March. On yesterday, we did carousel strategy for our math teachers in grades three through five, and that was school-level. On, not yesterday, today. Actually, we had our, started our content session, it was scheduled for yesterday, but it was changed to today. March twentieth, we have whole group comprehension strategies for our K-three students, teachers, with our MDE literacy coach. And on March twenty-ninth, we have differentiated instruction with our K-five teachers, with our MDE literacy coach, and we're reaching out to our math specialists from MDE also. You all have the same report. So, the first table is a representation of our STAR data. I'm not going to read all of that, but as you can see in reading, our numbers are kind of lag. And then, in math, our numbers from fall to winter, they actually increased a lot. I'm going to read those. First grade, eighty-two to eighty-six percent. Second grade, twenty-six percent to fifty-nine percent. Third grade, fifty-nine percent to sixty-five percent. Fourth grade, fifty percent, fifty-two percent. And fifth grade, thirty-six percent to sixty-three percent. The next table is our average score from our benchmark, one and two assessment. Third grade, we had fifty percent, we dropped to forty-seven percent. In math, benchmark one, we had forty-four percent, and we dropped to, we stayed, remained at forty-four percent, which is basic. In fourth grade, we had thirty-nine percent, which is basic, and we increased to fifty percent, which is still basic. Fourth grade math, forty-four percent, basic, fifty percent, we increased to passing. Fifth grade data increased from benchmark one to two, from thirty-seven percent to forty-eight percent. Math benchmark one, from thirty-six percent to thirty-seven percent. And science, we increased from thirty-six percent to forty-six percent, and that's our average score. At the last chart, you see that shows our proficiency for each grade level. So, in ELA benchmark number one, we dropped, and that's correlation with the numbers at the top. We had forty-two percent on our first benchmark, we dropped to eleven percent. In math, twenty-one percent, we dropped to eleven percent. Fourth grade, nineteen percent, we increased to twenty-nine percent. Math, fourteen percent, we increased to nineteen percent. In fifth grade, we increased from benchmark one and two, from twenty-five percent to thirty-three percent. Math benchmark one, five percent, we dropped to zero percent. In science, we increased, we went from forty-five percent to fifty-two percent. In third grade, if this had have been our third-grade reading summative assessment, we would have had eighty-one percent passing. Culture and climate, February twenty-sixth through March second, we did Celebrate Read Across America Week. The children were able to dress up and get out of dress code into character based off of a designated book we chose. March ninth, party with pizza. We celebrate those students who scored proficient or advanced on their benchmark two self-assessment. And March twenty-seventh, we're going to have our coordination of Mr. and Ms. French. Family and community engagement opportunities on March second. We had our community chat, community leaders and guests read, guests read to our students. March twenty-second, we had our third, we're going to have our third-grade parent meeting, March sixth, twentieth, and twenty-seventh. The Renaissance Club, which is TC Almore Lodge, they come in and mentor our fifth-grade boys, provide workshops, and also field trips. And on March thirtieth, our fifth-grade girls will attend the Civil Rights Museum with one hundred black women. Update on P-16 Council. We had our meeting on March first in terms of reviewing our School at Risk plan. Our staff ADA is ninety-three point three percent, and student ADA is ninety-six point seven eight percent. We do not have any external providers. And in our Title I funds, the plan is to purchase additional technologies, such as a mobile card with laptops, and renew our subscription with, for accelerated reader. And we will also utilize professional development opportunities, such as the Model School Conference and those identified through Mississippi Department of Education. Are there any questions? Okay.
Yes, I have a question, and this is a general question. I'm not going to answer to all the principals, but on average, I think you've been principal at French for four years.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I speak softly.
Oh, I so apologize. Yes, sir.
I get it. On average, if you were to think about those children that were in the first grade your first year, they'd now be in, I guess, fourth grade, first second, third, or fifth grade.
Fifth grade now.
What percentage of the children who were in the first grade class your first year at French are now in the fifth grade class?
I think it's like twenty, maybe twenty-something percent. We had a big decrease of students. We're a transient area, so students come and go, withdraw all the time, enroll all the time. So, that number is small. I do not have all of my students from first grade up until now. I only have one fifth-grade class with twenty-one students in there presently.
No, that's helpful. Part of the reason I ask that question is it's something that I've heard from other principals. You know, there's a frame of mind that when a child or a group of students enter a school in, say, first grade, that cohort of students will be together for that entire time. But what I'm learning is that in many of our schools, there's a lot of movement in and out. And so, as a principal, you may have a student for one year, or two years, or half a year. And it sounds like it's more the exception than the rule in many instances, where you'll have a cohort of children who will come in and be with you for the entire program. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir. And it's kind of hard to track in terms of data, when you have children who are in and out.
Sure. No, thank you.
Great evening. I am Ivanka McGee, Principal at Green Elementary School. Our mission, we are building a stronger Green together, to have every scholar, every day, ready for life. As you can see, our goals are to increase proficiency in reading, ELA, language and math, and science. Our projected goals are to increase proficiency in those areas, but our focus is looking particularly at our growth of students in each of the areas, as well as the promising twenty-five and the growth of all students. We took a close look at our priority standards, and so we developed our action plan, identifying strengths, weaknesses, based on last year's data, as well as our benchmark data and STAR data. Some of the areas that we are planning to work towards is extended learning time. Of course, quite naturally, we have the end of the day with our extended day schedule now, but we also have a block of time that we're looking at in the morning. Our focus, one of our focuses this year, based on the corrective action plan, has been differentiated instruction. And so, several of our PDs have outlined, looking at small group instructions and how we are actually differentiating those activities for our students. We're using the standards report and STAR. We have found that the state standards report very closely mirrors our proficiency on MAP. And so, we're using that report as we look at our STAR and benchmark assessment to monitor our progress for our students. Of course, we're using our FIT meetings and common weekly assessments to monitor our data. And our tiered interventions, we're using our ClassWorks for our students with face-to-face interventions. Our plan was developed with our leadership team, shared with the entire staff, as well as members of our site council. This information was shared with Dr. King, and she provided feedback as well. Professional development this month. I mentioned previously, we've been looking at differentiated instruction. And so, we will have a learning walk on Thursday. And so, we're looking at the plans that student, teachers develop for small group instructions, and whether or not differentiation is occurring in the classrooms. And on next week, we'll have our FIT meeting, looking at our benchmark two data. And then, we will have a STAR progress monitoring on next week as well. As we look at our benchmark data, comparing benchmark one and two. In third grade ELA, we had an increase of four percent. In fourth grade, an increase of slightly over six percent. But we did have a decrease of five percent in fifth grade. In math, third grade, slight decrease, one percent. In fourth grade, again, an increase of four percent. And almost the same data for fifth grade math. In science, however, we had a twenty-two percent increase with our science data. For culture and climate, some of the same things that have been mentioned. We have monthly school-wide PBIS celebrations that are PBIS committee plans for our students. Students have to earn Hornet Bucks each month in order to participate. We have our Student of the Month, Attendance Recognition, Honor Roll, STAR Growth celebrations. We've been fortunate to be selected by the Jackson Council to particularly look at our male students in grades three through five. And so, we had over thirty males that had an increase of fifty, an SGP of fifty or higher that were recognized in February. Additional, we do shout-outs to staff on intercon announcements and students. We have a weekly newsletter where we feature particular highlights for students and staff. And then, this is our fourth year where we have student clubs. And so, we provide opportunities for our students. This year, we have a cheer squad, we have a boys' ensemble, and we also have a choir. In the past, we've had visual arts and a drama club. And so, our classified staff supports those additional activities for our students. Family engagement opportunities, of course, in addition to PTA meetings, parent nights for third grade parents, reading fair workshops. We've shared our data, our improvement plans, our focuses, and how parents can read those reports and sharing strategies and activities with them. Our adopters are very supportive with providing supplies. We have one adopter in particular that wanted to support only teachers this year. And so, every month, they bring a happy just for the teachers. For other community, we participate in a Black History Program at one of the churches in our community. And so, that is, they're not an official specialty partner, but that gives our students an opportunity to participate. We have an annual community service project. We are partnered with the Leukemia and Lymphomia Society. We started that on last year in recognition of a student that was in remission. And we have male mentors that mentor our male students from New Hope Baptist Church, as well as a group of ladies, some that are retired teachers that tutor our students three times a week, our third grade students. Site council, some of the areas that are, that are identified, that we address when we have our meetings, five a year. Our MAP data, corrective action plan, the entire process with the SARs report and developing our action plan, our areas that we discuss. We also include PTA board members, and they give updates at these meetings. Our attendance for month six, which was February, students ninety-three percent and staff ninety-five percent. And we currently do not have external providers at this time. Are there any questions?
The information on the benchmark number two, the data, that's not available. Have the assessment?
For...
On the report we have, it says benchmark number two data is not available.
Okay. I updated that plan today. And so, I provided another plan. I did include in the second, the second benchmark two.
Okay.
I did update that plan.
I was just wondering, okay.
Yes. And I can leave a copy if you need it. You have it, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to all of you.
Good evening.
I'm Donald Black, Principal at John Hopkins Elementary, where we are building Hall of Famers, bringing our A-game, breaking down barriers. And yes, we will beat the odds. As you all know, our odds are to move our school from an F status of two forty to three thirty, which is our overall goal, also to increase student achievement, as well as to increase teacher capacity. Our mission at John Hopkins is to provide a quality education provided by our faculty and staff, promoting positive behavior, maintaining safe and orderly environment, and acquiring a knowledge base to become a lifelong learner. As we looked at our data for projections, we are looking to increase our reading proficiency from fourteen percent to twenty-four percent, which is only a ten-point increase. Math proficiency from seven to twenty-five. Reading growth, to stimulate that growth, we're looking at moving from twenty-six percent to forty-one percent. Also, making sure that reading growth for the promising twenty-five, from fifty-six point five to sixty-five percent. There was a lot of growth on last year from our promising twenty-five, so we're, that expectation is still there for this academic school year. Our math growth of promising twenty-five percent from six, from fifty-six point five percent to sixty-five percent. And looking at our science proficiency, which was just at the mark at forty-nine percent, we're looking at sixty-five percent for this academic school year. Our leadership team consists of the principal, myself, the assistant principal interventionist counselor, exceptional education lead teacher, the lead teacher from pre-K, attendance secretary, office manager, record clerk, PTO accountant, as well as parents. The team developed a needs assessment survey to provide opportunity for input from all entities involved. As indicated in our action plan, a framework was established to make sure that John Hopkins will achieve C status by employing instruction by doing the following: effective leadership, supportive learning environment, parent and community input, focused instruction that's taking place and positively impacting student data. We are also, daily tier interventions are taking place. We do have our REM Academy, where we are using scientifically-based instructional materials as well as software to build student capacity. We're also conducting PLCs, leadership team meetings, FIT meetings, faculty meetings, community chats. We've had Bring Your Parent to School days once a month, every Monday, to allow parents to learn like their children learn. We also are conducting, we've conducted a community brunch, standardized testing seminars for third grade gate, has already taken place twice this year, testing rallies to cultivate a climate and culture, which will take place on the thirtieth of this month, including ambitious goals, improving the conditions of our school campus, and to inspire relevance for student achievement as measured by our standardized testing. As we work to achieve our goal, looking at our professional development, we do have a planning place that is aligned and engineered based upon the data that discloses the needs of the students, the teachers. Also, the district is providing online, frontline training, a professional development tracking system. And that system also provides additional support to systemically and emphatically increase teacher capacity. For best practice is also provided for, through frontline for principals, lead teachers, literacy coaches as well. After our formative assessments, we conduct FIT meetings. They are held to determine target goals for every child, and the framework for instructional focus is determined weekly. Updates on instruction. As we look, we were, the benchmark assessment for benchmark two has been conducted. However, the data is not available at this time. However, we conducted a data analysis on our COAT, which is our last interim five assessment. It reveals some instructional gaps in the following areas: fraction, main idea, drawing conclusions, and reading for text-based evidence. This information will provide direction for reteaching and providing standardized-based instruction, allowing deficiencies for students to be addressed prior to our state standardized testing. As we continue to look at our data, COAT formative assessment revealed that there were fifty-two percent of our students struggling with adding, subtracting, and multiplying fractions. However, that still indicated forty-eight percent of mastery. Looking at priority standards, with proficiency of forty-six percent, students did not meet proficiency for standards five point NFA point two, which is also a priority standard, however, forty-eight percent did master. With ELA data revealed, there was fifty-two percent of the students did not meet proficiency for RL five point one, which is one of our main idea priority standards, however, forty-eight percent did. When we look at our fourth grade math assessment data, it revealed that sixty-one percent of our students achieved mastery on priority standard four NFB three. And that's subtracting and adding mixed fractions. So, there was increase overall for fourth grade mathematics. When we look down at fourth grade ELA assessment data, it revealed that forty-two percent of the student population needed additional support for drawing conclusions. However, indicating that forty-two percent, we could, we would be remiss if we don't mention the fact that there were still fifty-seven percent of the students that did meet mastery. The LEA and schools are using various sources of data to analyze and monitor benchmark data. We use STAR data walls, cards reviewed and revised monthly in data rooms. Data meetings are held every Wednesday. FIT meetings are held to identify deficiencies that are relevant to student performance or teacher capacity to cover the standard adequately. Ongoing professional development will be provided along with TUE, which is teachers observing other teachers. We've been doing those now each and every Thursday, where we identify pockets of excellence within our staff so that we can send those teachers that are deficient in particular areas to see excellence at hand so that they can employ those particular strategies to build student capacity. As we look at number four, which is focused specifically on how to improve learning environment within the, our building. I do apologize, I'm slipping pages here. Within our culture and climate piece, John Hopkins continued to improve culture and climate through our counselor, who's also serving as our behavioral specialist. She implements tools for life throughout the building to help students resolve conflicts on their own and decrease behavior problems. We also have our PBIS celebrations that takes place monthly when they're in our buildings, where we identify pockets of excellence. This event sets high expectations, creates friendly competition, and it builds school morale, which ultimately impacts the culture and the climate of the school. The areas of focus are academics, of course, positive behavior, attendance, growth, and proficiency. The purpose of the celebration is to create a climate and culture of high expectation, high student achievement, and to create a cohesive environment where excellence is celebrated. We're also, of course, conducting the routine drills, intruder, civil, fire, and earthquake drills. We are definitely doing this to make sure that we increase our capacity to react in strenuous situations where you do know how schools are being approached in inappropriate manner. So, those are to create a positive and safe environment for our students. Family and Community Engagement Opportunities are taking place each and every week with our school connections. School, teacher, and community engagement has made a complete turnaround as we have had great success with Remind, Class Dojo, Facebook, and Robo Calls to communicate effectively with our parents, community leaders, teachers, and stakeholders. We're also utilizing weekly newsletters and unified homework sheets with learning goals and daily behaviors are additional sources of communication to our parents. We're also, of course, again, we're bringing Your Parent to School Day has been implemented on the last Monday of each month to equip parents with best practice strategies. We're also using Math Night, Literacy Night. They're coming out to learn additional strategies, and they do have takeaways. We have donuts for dads, muffins for mom, book buddies that come each and every week. Also, we are also conducting community brunches twice this academic school year. We're also doing a testing tailgate, which will take place on the thirtieth of this month, where we will again inform our parents of the expectation of our state standardized testing as we are pushing to move towards C status. Also, we're doing fall and spring festivals, book fairs. Room mothers are also in our classrooms each and every day to help or to assist with instructional reinforcement for our teachers. As we look at our attendance, we have, for our student attendance, we have ninety-five percent. Staff ADA, ninety-seven percent. Our incentive programs are called Grammy Bucks for our students. Those Grammy Bucks are earned, and they are allowed to go to the PBIS store to purchase items with those Grammy Bucks. But they also are recognized during morning announcements with put-ups. We also do monthly dances, as well as we have Fun Friday treats that take place to increase our student attendance. The Grammy awards are also given to teachers for attendance. They earn, when they come fifteen minutes early, they earn that fifteen minutes on the latter end so that we can make sure that we have proficient coverage within monitoring our students. So, they have an opportunity. They come early and they leave late. We are planning with our additional resources for Title I to purchase cards for accountability grades three, four, and five. There will be class sets of Chromebooks. As the state demands that we are allowing our students to type, I want our students to be able to utilize the mouse, be able to drag and drop, to be able to access, to be able to be proficient in those particular areas. They'll need to be exposed to computers daily. So, we are intending to purchase cards for each particular grade level so that they can have ample practice. Are there any questions?
Yes, this is Ed again. I noticed you referenced ClassWorks. I know that's a software program that's been identified in other board meetings. I was just wondering if you could share your perspective on how well or not it's working with the students in your school.
ClassWorks is an awesome program. We are utilizing it to, to build capacity with our students that are considered a part of our promising twenty-five. I think that it is an awesome program. It is outlined to build capacity for students. I do wish we could have had the opportunity to... could have had the opportunity to choose the particular population within that bottom twenty-five because there are some students that are part of that bottom twenty-five that are so low that they need face-to-face instruction with teachers. So, we are having to divide that time to make sure that Classworks, that they are proficient in Classworks as well with face-to-face instruction.
Thank you.
And Dr. Sebag, if I could add, just with our relationship with Classworks, initially when we purchased Classworks, it was for about 6,000 students. Classworks, as a partner wanting to, you know, step up and see us be successful, they provided for the remainder of this school year, access for every child in the district at no cost. So, again, 6,000 students was initially what we, what we paid for, what we purchased for our Promising Twenty-Five. But again, after spring break, all of our students have access to this individualized level of instruction. So, we'll be utilizing that in schools moving forward to support all of our students.
That's great. Thanks for that update.
Any additional questions? Thank you.
Good evening. I am Faith Strong. I'm the principal of Johnson Elementary School. I do represent 494 scholars located at 1339 Oak Park Drive, where we are teaching individuals to grow and excel while reaching for the stars. As everyone has stated, our goals are to increase proficiency and growth in ELA, math, and science. As you can see from last year, our achieved data was 264 points. We're five points from a D. So, instead of shooting for a D for next year, our projected goals will be to receive 330 points, which is a C. With our school leadership team, some of the strategies that we have done at Johnson include making sure that we are utilizing Classworks along with Fast Forward. We do monthly progress monitoring of Star, reading, and math. We make sure that our instruction is aligned to our state standards and district pacing, where we receive pacing guides from ATI as well as the Kirkland Group. And we also utilize our personnel resources such as our librarian interventionist, music teacher, open doors in our classrooms during our uninterrupted reading block. As we review some of the professional development, some that have been done thus far, at school level, of course, we conduct FIT meetings throughout the school year, looking at various pieces of data, Star, Cote, ATI, AR. We have an MDE literacy coach. One of the professional development sessions that she conducted in February was on-demand opinion writing because the students will be tested on different types of writing, so we focused on opinion writing for February. And then JPS actually provides professional development as well. So, we have Tools for Life that is implemented in our schools, and then also our kindergarten teachers were trained on dyslexia. As we look at our data, our update on instruction and assessment, you can see that our Star Reading and Star Math data, we both increased from BOY to MOY, which is the beginning of the year and middle of the year. Our benchmark data, we have kudos to my fifth grade ELA in science, as well as my third graders in math, but we did have a slight decrease in fourth grade. Our culture and climate, couple of things that we do at Johnson include cultural learning walks with the Ask for More Jackson. We also have staff and student recognitions monthly. One of the things that we are doing now is doing an AR challenge. So, for the month of February, we challenged our scholars to read 20 books, and for the month of March, we challenged them to read 30 books. And so, these are books that they are reading using the Accelerated Reader Program, and they have to pass all tests with 85% or higher. And if those students reach the goal for February and March, then they will be able to attend the Mississippi Braves game, and we've set that trip for April the 30th. Some family and community engagement opportunities include, we do have book buddies, we do partner with Broadmoor Baptist Church, and they have book buddies that come in and read to our third grade scholars. They also make sure that the students are reading AR books. We had our Read Across America Day celebration as well. This Friday, we will be having our Donuts with Dads. We have our book fair that is going on now at the school in our media center, and as well as the Ask for More Arts collaboration, where we have JSU art students that come in and actually conduct art sessions with our scholars. Our P-16 Site Council, we have met throughout this school year, and they do provide insight and suggestions on resources and opportunities to make sure that we are increasing our school's performance. As we look at the student and staff ADA, for month six, our ADA for our students was 93%. We do focus on our students and monitor and track those who have three, five, 10, and 12-day absentees. And then we also are considered, well, we're focusing on our chronic absenteeism throughout the district, and our percentage right now is 19%. And so, it's considered to be 10% or less. You will not be chronic, but if you're 10% or higher, it's considered chronic absenteeism. So, that was a report that was sent out today by Dr. Sargent. We do not have any external providers, but with our Title One funds, we will be purchasing additional technology because we are limited to one lab at Johnson. We will also use our funds to renew our subscription of AR, and also provide professional development opportunities for our teachers. So, do we have any questions at this time?
Yes, I have a question. What do you think accounts for the drop from beginning of year to middle of year for the fourth graders in both ELA and math?
For, you're talking about the benchmark, right?
I am.
Okay. With the benchmark assessment for fourth grade, I would like to mention that I do have one of my fourth grade teachers, she was there for the beginning of the year, which is our benchmark one that was in December. And then she went out on FMLA, and so we had to do some tweaking there. We had to get another limited service teacher to replace her, so it wasn't the actual teacher who was there teaching the ELA in that subject area. So, that was one of the factors that I know contributed to it.
Okay. And on math, is it a similar situation?
Math, similar situation. We had a decrease of eight points. Well, the math teacher, because they are departmentalized, the math teacher was actually there, and we haven't had a chance yet to actually dig deep into the data since we just got back from spring break, but we will make sure that we look at those deficit areas and see what our strengths and weaknesses were, and make sure that we prioritize before the math in April.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Delacy Bridges, the principal at Lester Elementary, the school where everybody is somebody and where we enter to learn and leave to achieve. Ultimately, our ultimate goal is to increase our proficiency in English, language arts, math, and of course, science. Additionally, we are definitely focused on trying to improve our growth, our growth of all, as well as our bottom twenty-five. The mission of Lester Elementary is to instruct, equip, and empower students for academic success in the classroom and beyond. The vision of Lester Elementary is to create an instructionally engaging environment for scholars who will experience lifelong academic success. Our ultimate goal is to go back, or excuse me, to at least beat our prior school rating, which was AC. The score was 345. Our goal is to reach a 345 or better this upcoming year. Before you'll see our data, as far as the 2016, 2017 achievement year, you'll also see our goals, our projected goals for this upcoming year. Our action plan was developed by our school leadership team. It includes, after careful examination of our data, and also needs assessments, as well as looking at what observations were in place, there existed the need for us to definitely address informational texts and math, using math drills, as well as the use of our Classworks, Fast Forward, and our subscription to MobiMaxx. We also included monthly progress monitoring using Star Reading and math, as well as Star Early Literacy. We also aligned our bell-to-bell instruction with state standards and district pacing. And of course, we included our intervention efforts to increase our growth, as well as address some of our proficiency issues. At this point, we have an all-hands-on-deck mentality that includes the use of all of our resource personnel, as well as instructional assistance to assist with helping to grow our scholars. We also looked at alternating our schedules so that we give uninterrupted instruction during the mornings in both reading and math. Additionally, we included learning walks with our MDE personnel, and as a part of that, the district leadership team has been very supportive by offering bi-weekly content sessions in our area, as well as conducting FIT and data meetings within the area to look at specifically what we can do to become better as an area, as well as individual schools. Most recently, our professional development has consisted at the school level of state assessment training, remediation in sample test items, and FIT and data meetings. Additionally, we do have the support of an MDE literacy coach. She has given professional development in vocabulary and phoneme graphing mapping, and actually is scheduled to conduct Word Masters training with our K through three teams on next week. On the district level, we've most recently had library media, center PD, Classworks training, as well as dyslexia training. And currently, in Area Two, we are undergoing content sessions for the grade levels, for grade levels three through five in each tested area. Our instructional and assessment update is listed on the chart below. I would like to note that we increased our proficiency in each grade, in each subject, with the exception of third grade ELA. We experienced a slight decrease by nine points, and in fifth grade math. And if you'll note that we are currently addressing those, we've actually repurposed some of our staff members so that the students that experienced the greatest deficit, excuse me, that experienced the greatest deficiencies are now receiving instruction from teachers who actually experienced the greatest success in those particular standard areas. The culture and climate, the way that we're addressing our culture and climate, we do have a student of the month recognition that's on a posted display with the students' names and a brief bio posted in the hallway as you enter, as well as we recognize our staff members of the month. They receive plaques, as well as there is a display for both classified, certified, and a team of the month. There are also put-ups throughout the building where students receive praise, as well as staff members. We have our PBIS recognition events, and as well as daily sweet tweets. That comes in the form of our afternoon announcements and our morning announcements. Any scholar can be recognized for being caught exhibiting excellent behavior. We also use it as an opportunity to give shout-outs to staff members for just being team players and exhibiting the overall positive behavior as staff even to help to support our scholars and one another as colleagues. At Lester, we also have our Southern Jewels, which is our girls group, in addition to a site, excuse me, a student Community engagement, most recently, has come in the form of our third grade parents participating in our MDE literacy event, as well as we had our Dr. Seuss Read Across America literacy event, and on Friday, we are scheduled to have a career day for our scholars to enjoy. We do conduct our Site Council meetings where we invite our Site Council members in to have meaningful discussions and offer input on ways that they can support and suggest ideas to achieve our academic goals. Our Month Six ADA was 96.89%. Our staff ADA is 90%, and I would like to add that I do have two staff members currently on FMLA. Additionally, as far as our external providers go, we do have the fortune of having an MDE literacy coach. She does provide our staff with professional development opportunities, resources, modeling, coaching, just a vast array of services. And I would like to note that as a result, 67% of our kindergartners, 43% of our first graders, and 56% of our second graders have scored at or above proficiency on the most recent screeners in Star Early Literacy and/or Star Reading. With our title funding, we are planning to purchase additional technology resources for our classrooms. Some, we still have a few of our classrooms who do not have adequate computers and smart screens. We want to look at updating those, as well as renewing some of our subscriptions to MobiMaxx and Accelerated Reader. Also, we're planning to allocate funding for professional development for our teachers to support our achievement goals. Are there any questions?
Hi, Ms. Bridges?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, this is Jean Hairston. I, you did mention the drop in the third grade ELA.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any sense of some of the contributing factors there?
Well, we have discussed some of the contributing factors, and I think what, once we analyzed where we went wrong, we kind of focused on the wrong things. The things that we were already doing well, the standards that we were already performing extremely well in turned out to be not-so-high-priority items when they took the next benchmark. And so, we've looked at how we can go back and re-engage those items in a timely manner to address those shortcomings before the students begin on the math test.
I think that is a good idea to, to use the teachers who are highly successful.
Yes, ma'am.
To help. What about the staff ADA at 90%? Does the fact that you have staff on family medically, that impacts the calculation of ADA?
Yes, ma'am, it does.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
I would like to add that the teachers who are also going in to work with those classes are certified teachers who are going into those classrooms from K through second grade into third through fifth grade classes. So, the students are receiving smaller group instruction that's a lot more intense so that we can more rapidly address those deficits.
Right. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Helen Young. I'm the principal at Marshall Elementary, where we believe our students are stars, smart, thoughtful, accountable, responsible, and successful. Our goal overall is to increase our proficiency score in ELA, math, and science, and to move from being a 258F to a 330C. So, we went into Marshall this year after we received our data knowing that we must do three things. We must own it, we must know it, and we must address it. We own it. We don't like it, but we own it. We know that. It starts with me. I'm held accountable, but we also, teachers are held accountable, the district, our parents, and our students. We also know that We also know that if we believe that we will repeat what we don't repair. So, we have been working on repairing things all year. So, we look at the action plan, some of the things that we're doing. To know it is, everyone has to know their data at Marshall. From the parents to the students, we have data walls, the students have data cards, the teachers have data with their pictures on it. The students, of course, is private, it's based on a secret code that they know what's on the data wall. So, it's private enough that they only know their data, everybody does not know their data. We are implementing our success plan at Marshall. We do something, we call it boot camp, every morning from eight o'clock to ten o'clock, nobody moves. We do have other teachers that are going into the classroom to help our three-through-five teachers. We have a two-hour reading block. We also have a certified tutor that we were able to use Title I funds to pay for her services. We use our interventionist, we use the librarian who has a certification in reading to also help, especially with our third grade students. The key to addressing everything is consistency. We also know that if we don't do things every day consistently, we're not going to move. But this year, everyone has had the focus of being consistent. We're analyzing data constantly through FIT meetings, bi-weekly. Every time we get benchmark data, or nine weeks' data, or common weekly assessment data, we are constantly readjusting our plans. We're looking at them, if the plan does not work, we go back to the table and we change what needs to be changed. We're tracking the standards for mastery. We're meeting with our students and parents and again, holding everyone accountable. We are evaluating teachers. I'm thankful for just getting an assistant principal with the four-hundred-and-thirty students that we have at Marshall who just started in February. And that has been extremely helpful so that we're both able to go out in classrooms, evaluate, and then not just evaluate, but come back and bring the teachers to the table. And we look at ways that we can coach them. We have been hosting community chats with grades three through five parents. In fact, we had one in February where we allowed the parents to practice the MAP test themselves and ask questions, and we provided them with tips. We're using an extra hour every day, daily, to do something called Power Hour Reading, Math, or Science. So, this week, we may be on Power Hour Reading. So, everybody from kindergarten up to fifth grade, we're doing Power Hour Reading from two o'clock to three o'clock, everyone's reading, based on the standard in grade three through five. The next week, we will do math, and then the following week, we do science. So, we're rotating that every week. We are providing interventions to our Promising Twenty-Five using classworks and other research-based strategies. Our leadership team meets twice a month to discuss implementation of our action plan and its effectiveness and evidence. So, where are we with professional development? We have an MDE literacy coach who's been extremely helpful in providing professional development to our teachers in grades pre-K through three, especially our third graders in February. She has been working with us weekly to meet with the third grade teachers. She first did a training on them with writing, writing is a deficiency. And so, then she went back into the classroom with the teachers and the students, and she modeled lessons, and the students participated. The administrators, we will be providing DI, differentiated instruction, professional development. We're going to actually do it Thursday, April third, and then April tenth. All of our teachers will be receiving Tools for Life training, which is tomorrow. During their planning time, it's just a review training. All teachers also have access to frontline education if they would like to seek and register for other professional development opportunities. Currently, we have two teachers who participate in our monthly PD with Jackson State University and the Kellogg Foundation with the Southwest Mississippi World Class Teaching Initiative with hopes of them being nationally board certified. The meetings are held at Marshall, we are the whole school for Marshall. I have two teachers and there are thirteen other teachers from the district that participate as well. Their focus is to strengthen education and literacy and incorporate best strategies, national board standards, and using differentiated instruction to tailor instruction. If we look at our data, we have seen an increase in our data from Benchmark One to Benchmark Two. We've gone, ELA proficiency increased by eleven point six percent. Our math increased by seventeen percent. However, we had a two percent decrease in science, but we still met our goal. Our science teacher, who is new, this is on fire for science, loves science. She's still holding around eighty-five to eighty-seven percent proficiency. To promote positive learning in our school, we do a lot of things. We recognize birthdays, we do shout-outs, students of the month, teachers of the month, Call Being Good initiative, we recognize perfect attendance for our staff and our students. We begin every staff meeting with the good news, tell me something good. Every, we try to work as a family at Marshall. Every month, we recognize our students with the ABCs for attendance, behavior, and course performance. We have field trips scheduled for our leadership team. We have students that serve on the school leadership team and on our safety patrol. They have visited colleges campuses, and they have been to the Civil Rights Museum just recently. We invite our parents to eat lunch with our students, and we even have readers for Read Across America. We've implemented something called Lunch Buddies at our school to build relationships. With that being said, to make sure that every child has a voice, each teacher picks a different Lunch Buddy, each person on the custodial staff, each person in the office, no matter who you are, we pick a different child every day to talk to, to build a relationship. Our goal is to start inviting community members like the firemen and the police department to come and have lunch and pick a Lunch Buddy every day. For family and community engagement, recently, our parents were invited to attend the parent engagement for third grade parents that was held at Bates. We also had our own community chat, we've had five so far. This next Tuesday and Wednesday, we're inviting our parents to come and pick up the report cards. We will be having parent conferences after school. Our teachers will be working a little bit late, but they want every parent to come and see them and pick up report cards. The school leadership team meets twice a month to discuss the implementation of our action plan and again, to make sure it's being effective. If we look at the staff and student attendance, we did have a drop in our student ADA and our staff ADA. For our students, we were at ninety-one percent. Over thirty percent of our students walk to school at Marshall Community School. So, when it rains and if it's pouring, many of our students may not come. We also had flu season for that last month for the students. And for our teachers, we also had a teacher on FMLA Two, actually. And one with the maternity leave and one with a serious illness. We received, again, with support from our MDE literacy coach, Ms. Patricia Razor. Again, she's doing professional development, but she also coaches. And she provides, she looks at our data and she provides insight as well to ensure we're carrying our literacy plan. For our Title I funds, this year, our goal is to purchase three smart boards, which will, every classroom will then have a smart board in every classroom after this last purchase. Our fifth graders are in need of computers. We're also looking to renew our subscription for Accelerated Reader and to resupply the Saxon Phonics materials for K through two. Are there any questions?
Ms. Young, I'm interested in your Power Hour Reading at the end of the day. How is that coming? Is that considered an hour of instructional time at the end of the day?
It's an hour of instruction time. And because our students receive fruit, because we know it's a long day. So, everyone in the building receives fruit or vegetables about one-thirty from our cafeteria. And everyone has pretty much the same material. So, it is a focus, for example, third, fourth, and fifth grade had to focus on informational text because that is a weakness. So, the reading texts that they use has been informational and maybe all week long. For our kindergartners, they are learning how to read, so they're using their little phonics readers. For our first graders, we, and second graders, we looked at fluency. Some of the results from our fluency has revealed that many of our students are not fluent. So, we are spending time, the assistant teachers are working with a group on fluency, and the teachers are actually using a piece of text.
Thank you.
Is there ever a time when they are able to do free reading, you know, where they choose?
Yes, Celebrated, yes, they have, we have AR. So, in the mornings, our students, when they come in after breakfast, they, we have some going to the library, some going to the computer lab every morning. So, they're able to go to the library and check out books in the morning, and they're able to take AR tests in the computer labs. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Kimberly Smith, the principal at North Jackson Elementary School, the home of the Tigers, where we are tenacious, innovative, gregarious, energetic, rigorous, and sensational. And I am a member of Team Six Fifty. The mission of North Jackson Elementary School, in partnership with the nurturing community, will provide a solid foundation in academics and social responsibilities needed to achieve and sustain ultimate success. Our school's vision is to become an A-level school. As you see, our projected goals for reading proficiency to move from twenty-two percent to forty percent, math proficiency from thirteen percent to twenty-five percent, reading growth for all from fifty percent to sixty-five percent, math growth for all from twenty-two percent to fifty percent, reading growth for the Promising Twenty-Five percent from sixty-one point four percent to seventy-five percent, math growth of the Promising Twenty-Five from thirty-seven percent to fifty percent, science proficiency from forty-two point six percent to fifty-five percent. Our academic goal is to increase proficiency and growth in ELA and math and science. And our goal is three-thirds of success, and we aren't settling for anything less. With our district leadership team, school leadership team, we analyze all of our data from our attendance, behavior, and course performance to our FIT. We really focus on our intervention process through MTSS, and we look at PBIS with our behavior along to make sure that our children are choosing the right tool each day through Tools for Life. And our council supports that effort with the teachers to ensure that we are creating scholars that have sound behavior, make good decisions. We also utilize our class works, and we've increased our time from thirty minutes to forty-five minutes, and we carefully monitor that to ensure that our students are on class works. And thankfully, now we can include all of our students in class works to build those deficit areas even for our high students, our proficient and advanced students. We want to make sure we're closing their gaps to keep them proficient and advanced. As we look at our professional development activities, on this Saturday, our teachers will be participating in a professional development sponsored by the School of Improvement Office, and that's going to be periodically for the month of April as well. And so, we utilize that information to really impact instruction. Thankfully, I have two teachers that also will be presenting those lessons as well. I have a very data-driven staff, and so, we're very resourceful, and we look at the data constantly to ensure that we are impacting our students. Most of the time before we can even have FIT, soon as the scores appear, our staff is already working on making sure they're analyzing the data from Benchmark One to Benchmark Two as well as our formative assessments and STAR. Our data wall is divided into two levels, the upper tier and lower tier, which means that if it's a minimum proficiency level, we look at our students that tested in third grade, they're now fourth graders, one A to one B, to see how we can move those students from one A to one B or even to a two. For the proficiency level, for basic, which is the two, they're divided into two A, two B. So, our students have a clear view, as well as teachers have a clear view of what students need to move from what level to the next with our proficiency level for our third, for our fourth and fifth graders, so we can make sure that we are reaching growth. When we look at our data, as we analyze Benchmark One to Benchmark Two, from Benchmark One in ELA for third grade, ELA increased one percent, from twenty-three percent to twenty-four percent, math from twenty-eight percent to thirty-three percent. In fourth grade, there was no change, was sixteen percent from Benchmark One to Benchmark Two, but in math, they moved eleven percent from seventeen percent to eighteen percent. Fifth grade, we had a slight decrease of two percent from twenty-two to nineteen. And then, we do know that because of some issues with fourth grade on last year, that we're working diligently with our fifth grade math students. And there is a low percentage of proficiency, but there is a high percentage of growth. When looking at the growth from the first benchmark to the second benchmark, every grade level experienced over sixty percent growth, where they either moved one point or entire proficiency level from Benchmark One to Benchmark Two. And also, when we looked at math, every grade level except for third grade math increased over sixty percent when we look at the growth piece, not necessarily proficiency, and that was done by hand, by simply dividing the number of students that moved over the number of total students that tested. And so, our difference from Benchmark One to Benchmark Two overall in ELA was point seven percent. We grew four point three percent points in math and thirty-three percent in science, from twenty-seven percent to sixty percent. And so, I have a phenomenal fifth grade science teacher who pretty much works in centers every day. Prior to January, they were working with thirty-five students apiece, and she still ran eight centers. And so, phenomenal, hard-working science teacher to have that type of growth. One of the things that we do each day to ensure that we are reaching our students, we do strategic learning opportunities throughout the day, every day, Monday through Friday, where our instructional assistants work with identified students based off STAR. They go into the classroom and work with a group of students, no more than eight students in a group, and they work with them in the classroom with the teacher. And then, we utilize our extended day as a part, we call it Climbing to Success, where on Mondays and Tuesdays, we look at, on Monday, we look at our informational literature, and then the standards that are identified for informational literature. On Tuesday, we look at informational, at our literature, at our reading, our literature standards. And on Monday, we look at our informational text standards. On Wednesday, it's called Writing Wednesday, they work on writing standards. On math, we have divided out there about seven to eight competencies, standards in math, so we divided them out, where they're working on base ten, they're working on measurement and data. And so, the assistants have resource binders that we utilize with USA Test Prep. So, they have actually, where they pull the standards, the activities, and then they also keep a feedback sheet to know how the students are performing each week. And that is turned into the interventionist, and we analyze that data to see if we need to revisit that particular standard with that group of students. Looking at our positive learning environment, we of course have PBIS, Tools for Life, and we utilize that to ensure that our students are making right decisions, that we have a culture, a positive culture that's embedded with expectations so students know exactly what is expected each day. As it relates to our celebrations for success, our Pepsi Brown Bottling, and this is going to kind of combine with our family and community engagement opportunities. We have a phenomenal community partnership with our adopters along with our PTA. With our adopter with Pepsi Brown Bottling, they sponsored for our fifth grade scholars before motivational. We, through our site council meetings and just individualized discussions, we looked at the motivational piece for our fifth grade because we know that growth is so very, very important, and we want to keep them motivated. So, from Benchmark One to Benchmark Two, we worked and developed top three go and see, where three students from each fifth grade class that scored the highest on the benchmark in reading, math, and science. Once those scores came in, we identified those top three students from each class, which gave us twelve students. They will actually take a field trip to Pepsi Brown Bottling in Brandon and go view the facility and actually be able to look at the different jobs and relate them to what you need to do in school in order to be able to obtain these jobs as, when they get older. And so, they will also have lunch at Sally Mooney's. We also work with our PTA to incentivize our scholars. We will have a chew and chip party for our students that score proficient or above on our second benchmark test on March thirtieth. We also have, the students that made growth in two or more areas in fifth grade will participate in a pizza party also sponsored by Pepsi because the main focus of this particular incentive was for students to grow. And so, if they experience growth in two or more areas, they will participate in a pizza party. Our Pepsi Brown Bottling has also partnered with ten of our fifth grade scholars that in fourth grade, they tested either proficient or advanced. And so, to ensure that we don't have any single-digit proficiency, and those ten scholars would represent exactly ten percent of that fifth grade class achieving proficient and advanced. Mr. Truman Abbey, he comes every Tuesday and Thursday from eleven to twelve, and he works with ten of our scholars, and he taught them on higher-level math to ensure that we can, that they can stay proficient and advanced because one of the scholars is included in that group. And the highest you can make on the test is four ninety-nine, he made a four ninety-nine in fourth grade. So, we want him to be able to emulate that for fifth grade. Our PTA provides edible treats to ensure that we have, because our kids love to eat. And so, not only do they get some snacks, but we also want to make sure that we are rewarding them for the hard efforts that they put forth each and every day. Also, we have a partnership with Miss Mem's class at Jackson State, which gives us about twenty-two. which gives us about twenty students on Wednesday, and they tutor in grades three through five, and they're there from nine to eleven. So they work with our third through fifth grade students, and we get the same students the same time just about every week so that there'll be some consistency there. Also, on April the fifth, we will celebrate our National School of Excellence designation from National PTA through our partnership there, and just recently, on, at the end of February, we received the Make Governance Award for our partnership with Pepsi Brown Bottling and experiencing growth with our fifth grade students on last year. We will have our community chat that will be on March the twenty-ninth, focusing, we're working with our kindergarten students. And then we also have some upcoming third grade parent minutes to discuss third grade literacy program on April third. Our Math Academy Night is April nineteenth, Fifth Grade Science Night is April twenty-sixth. We also have Read Across America, where we have many readers, celebrity readers come in and participate with our pre-K through fifth grade scholars on April the second. With our Site Council, and it also includes our PTA Board, we meet monthly, and I provide school improvement updates, and so they also offer suggestions for success, recommendations, things that we need to continue to do, things that we may need to revamp and revise to ensure that we are meeting the needs of the students and the staff. Staff ADA, student ADA was ninety-six point three percent for the month of February. Staff ADA is ninety-six point three percent for the month six. We don't have any outside external services being provided. However, for our newly allocated resources, we are using our Title I funds to secure online subscriptions through Triumph Learning to ensure students receive access to MAP, align online resources through a blended learning approach. Title I funds are also being used to purchase more Chromebooks. With five hundred and seventy-six students, two hundred and fifty-six of them are third through fifth grade students, and we have one computer lab with twenty-three working computers and sixteen computers in the library. We have to have access to more Chromebooks to ensure that our students have access to technology during instruction. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Great day. I bring you greetings from Team Oak Forest, soaring high, soaring to do our best. My name is Ms. Luckett, and I am the first-year principal at Oak Forest Elementary, where our mission is to establish a community of leaders and learning through relationships, relevancy, and rigor, one student at a time. Our vision, all learners believe in their power to embrace learning, to excel, and to own their future. What are the school academic goals? Two thousand sixteen-seventeen, we had a reading proficiency of fifteen percent. Projected goal, seventeen-eighteen, we want twenty. Math proficiency, fourteen point three. Seventeen-eighteen, we want twenty. Reading growth for all, thirty-six point six. We want fifty-five. Math growth for all, thirty-one point nine. We want fifty-five. Reading growth of the promising twenty-five percent, forty-three point two. We want fifty-five. Math growth of the promising twenty-five percent, thirty-six point seven percent. We want fifty-five. Science proficiency, thirty-two point four. We want forty-five. How are we going to achieve our projected goal? In order to achieve, to achieve a projected goal of a C rating for the two thousand seventeen-eighteen school year, the school leadership team, which consists of the principal, myself, counselor, interventionist, and content-led teachers, will meet monthly. The team would analyze data to discuss instructional practices for observations and identify school-wide instructional trends for the development of a CPD, a cycle of professional development. Additionally, our desire is to build a collegial environment that promotes a culture of teaching and learning. During this meeting, or these meetings, team members identify performance challenges and root causes to develop an action plan that address each challenge. I'd like to give you one example. Under the directions of Dr. Belcher, we noticed that our school, we had a lot of limited-service teachers. So third through fourth grade, as you know, is where we get our proficiency growth in that area. So we made a bold decision after looking at the data to move all certified teachers to third through fifth grade, leaving a support system in K through second. Professional development, I will highlight a few because I know you've heard a lot. Our MDE coach is working with test prep, unpacking the standards, writing to the texts to understand differentiated in whole group and centers. And I'll move on to number three, discussing the data. I have for you three data points tonight. Benchmark one and two, I'll start with grade three. ELA, the percentage of students that pass BMI, Benchmark One, was seventy-six percent, and Benchmark Two was eighty-three percent. So data reveals an increase. Oak Forest students score slightly higher than the average Jackson Public School student in third grade. Math, the percentage of students that passed Benchmark One was nineteen percent, and Benchmark Two was sixteen percent. So data reveals a slight decrease. Grade four, ELA, the percentage of students that passed BMI, Benchmark One, was twenty-one percent, and Benchmark Two was twenty-eight percent. So data reveal a slight, a significant increase there. Fourth grade math went from eight percent to eighteen percent. That's a significant increase. And I don't know if you all have the updated one with the benchmark on there? Okay. Fifth grade ELA, fourteen percent to twenty-five percent from Benchmark One to Benchmark Two, a significant increase. Math, two percent, and this is passing, is zero percent for fifth grade math. Science, the percentage of students that passed Benchmark One was forty-five percent, and Benchmark Two was fifty-six percent. So another significant increase. In summary, our benchmark data reveals that across grades three through five, our ELA percentage increased. Grade three and five math percentage decreased, but grade four had an increase in students that passed. Grade five, grade fifth science data showed tremendous improvement across Benchmark One and Benchmark Two. Our ELA scores across all grades are in line with the STAR reading data, demonstrating that many of our students have moved one to two grades, grade bands above their beginning level, with a large number of students reading above their grade level. Our AR results. Our AR word count second data point has increased from four hundred thousand words per week to over one million words per week. Students are reading an average of over six hundred books per week. Our comprehension level has increased from sixty-eight percent to an average of eighty-three percent across all grade. STAR, an increase from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year to twenty-seven percent. That's third grade. Fourth grade in math increased from, it's increased, I'm sorry, fourth grade in reading, twenty-three percent. On watch, it's dropping, thirty-eight percent. Fifth grade STAR data revealed in our, above, there was a nineteen percent increase from beginning of the year to middle of the year in reading, and one percent increase from beginning of the year to middle of the year in math. Our on-watch percentage dropped fifty-seven percent in reading from beginning of the year to middle of the year. And our on-watch percentage in math decreased twenty-four percent from beginning of the year to middle of the year. Culture, we like to address the ABCs. Attendance, behavior, and curriculum. So we do things like bell-to-bell dress down, referral-free Friday, PBIS flash dance, and store visits. Read-a-thon, AR celebration, Tools for Life, Book Buddies, Read Across America. Superhero of the Week addresses those students who come to school every day on time. They get an opportunity for the whole week. For the first day, they do the announcements. The second day, they get a treat from the principal. The third day, they get to, to be out of uniform. The fourth day, they bring a special guest to lunch. But the big thing that we do have coming up is vision to learn. We will have Master P at our school on April the twenty-sixth. Those students with the highest points, along with those students that will be receiving glasses from a community organization, will have a chance to meet Master P on that day. Community engagement, community engagement, PTA, of course, Site Council, PEN Night, Parent Education Night, we had our first one last month, and I was so excited because the parent asked me, could we do it again? We will do it again. Lunch with Dad, Grandparents' Day, and for those of us who are grandparents, we show up and we show out. So it was a lot of grandparents there that day. My staff and student attendance, students ninety-two point eighty-eight percent, staff ninety-two point two. And I did notice that that was just for February. We did not have below ninety-five for the other months. And as the other principals have stated, there is a vacancy that came available, and those type of incidents play a part in your ADA. I do not have any external providers. Title I, I will use my Title I funds to upgrade my current technology to enhance classroom instruction and increase interactive learning for students. Research states that students who learn by the use of computer-based instruction tend to learn more in less time, enjoy their classes more, and develop a more positive attitude when technology is incorporated into the classroom. The end. Soaring high. Any questions? You know, my grandson always say, "Done, done." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Dana Owens, the principal at Raines Elementary School. Our overall goal is to increase proficiency in all areas of academic achievement at our school. As outlined in our update document, we want to increase reading proficiency from sixteen point four to twenty-five percent, math proficiency from six percent to twenty percent, reading growth for all from forty-eight to fifty-five percent, math growth from thirty-six to fifty-five percent, reading growth from fifty-nine to eighty-five percent, math growth for the promising twenty-five from forty-one to fifty percent, and science proficiency from thirty percent to sixty-five percent. Our goals are very aggressive because we want to move our school from an F to a C, and we based our goals on what we had done before. This is my third year being the principal, so the first year, we moved the school from being an F to a high D, almost a C. And the numbers that we set our goal base by was based on what we knew we could do and what we had done before. So our action plan in order to meet our goals is that our school leadership team meets twice a month in order to review and discuss the current attendance, behavior, STAR, formative assessment, benchmark assessment data. We met on March the first of this month, and we are scheduled to meet again on March twenty-seventh. Our data meetings are held after each assessment to identify areas of strengths, weaknesses, and to identify strategies for reteaching. Our school FIT meeting for Benchmark Two will be held on tomorrow, which is March the twenty-first, and the district supports that we have with Area Two, it is scheduled for March the twenty-eighth, according to our calendar. Adjustments are made to our action plan based on our data, and this includes identifying research-based strategies, allocating our resources, revising our tutorial schedule, and those are all discussed during our school leadership meeting. Professional development for the staff is planned based on our student performance and our observation of our teachers. Professional development sessions are placed on our monthly instructional calendar, which we provide to teachers and our staff. Staff are held accountable by myself and my assistant principal through the use of our administrative observations in the classroom, observations of our lesson plans, peer observations, they hold each other accountable through those formal conferences where we document conversations that we have with teachers about improving their practices and, if warranted, notices of corrective action. I did list the professional developments that we have outlined for the month of March. On March the seventh, we did before, during, and after reading strategies, and that was conducted by our MDE literacy coach, which is Ms. Debbie Johnston. On March the twentieth, which was today, our area content sessions began. So that's one way we utilize our district supports, is that our teachers do attend those. On March twenty-first, which is tomorrow, I will be conducting reading informational text session with the staff. On March the twenty-sixth, myself and the assistant principal, we will attend the NISL Regional Leadership Conference, which will be in Raymond. And on March twenty-seventh, we are utilizing our district supports through the curriculum office with Mr. Otis Miller, and he is scheduled to do effective math and small group instruction, professional development with the teachers. The update on our instruction and our assessment from Benchmark One to Benchmark Two, I am proud to say that we did increase in all academic areas. Listed for you all are the goals that our leadership team set for the school, as well as what we achieved. And looking at our data by grade level and third grade, from Benchmark One to Benchmark Two, they went, the students increased from ten point nine percent to forty-six percent in third grade, which is an increase of thirty-five point seven percent. And fourth grade, they went from six point nine to sixty-one point one percent, I'm sorry, to sixty-eight percent, which is a sixty-one percent increase. And in fifth grade, ELA from two percent to nineteen percent, which is a seven percent increase. In third grade math, they went from zero percent to three percent. Students scoring proficient, which is a two percent, I'm sorry, a three percent increase. And fourth grade math, they went from two point three percent to seventeen percent, which is a fourteen point increase. And from six point five, in fifth grade math, they went from six point five to fifty-two percent, which is a forty-five percent increase. And science, from thirteen percent of the students being proficient to twenty-eight percent. That is not where our goal was set. However, we would like to note that in the area of science, there were ten students who were one question away from being proficient. So they were one point off from scoring a proficient mark. And if those students had gotten one more question correct, we wouldn't have met our goal for Benchmark Two at fifty percent. So with that in mind, like I said, like I stated earlier, we do make adjustments to our action plan based on our student data. So we are going to add those ten students to our tutorial schedule, which will be tutored for one hour by our academic tutor. So we will make that adjustment, and as we look at the data and look at the items, if we need to make any more adjustments, that will be discussed in our school leadership team. What we have been doing at Raines to promote a positive learning environment, we have seven opportunities for this month utilizing our district and community resources through PBIS, Tools for Life, school adopters, and community members. On March the first, we had our PBIS Care to Cash Store, and that is where students can use the bucks that they've earned. They used them, the bucks that they've earned during the month of February in order to purchase items at our on-site store. On March the sixth, the counselor did a professional development with teachers where she trained them on the tool of the month, which for this month, it was compromise. So she did train the teachers on how to increase our character education, and they had that professional development. On March the ninth, the counselor met with our girls to discuss a topic in particular, fourth and fifth grade girls, because based on the data, those were the, those were the students that had the most infractions. On March the ninth, we had a Go Green party for our students who scored proficiency on Benchmark Two. So everything was green, green punch, green cupcakes, green everything. And we did offer gene passes to the students who had made growth on the assessment. So those are incentives for students. On March the twentieth, we have a PBIS team meeting. And that team meeting was to plan the PBIS and Tools for Life activities for the month of April, and that is based on the data. We don't plan activities, PBIS activities and site-based council activities months ahead of time because we like to base it on our current data. So we do it by the month, and we do use our attendance, behavior, and our course performance data to drive what activities we do at the school. Family and community engagement opportunities, oh, I'm sorry, I need to go back. We still have two more activities for students during the month of March. The counselor and a community member, we do have someone from the highest county sheriff's department coming to speak to our boys in grades four through five. And on March the thirtieth, our PBIS activity again is a kickball game scheduled for the staff and students, where they'll compete with that. So they'll use their books for the kick, to attend the kickball game. For family and community involvement, what we have, the latter part of February and scheduled for this month, we have already had our parent test preparation workshop, and that was held on February the twenty-seventh. On today, which is March twentieth, we had our parents and pals lunch, which we discussed the writing guidelines for math. And we also informed the parents of our current academic goals that we have for the spring. So they are aware what our STAR goals are. They are aware of how we did on our bench, this current Benchmark Two assessment. And on March the twenty-second, our students, they have World Water Day projects where the general assembly recognizes World Water Day, and Dr. Sidney Ares Elliott is scheduled to be at our school in order to do a project with our students. So we are involving our community members as well. Our site council meets regularly, once a month. This month, they are scheduled to meet on March the twenty-third. They will, agenda topics that they will be discussing is our current attendance, behavior, and our Benchmark Two data. They will review our school improvement, report and update information, and they will plan our April student and community engagement activities based on what those data points are. Our student and staff attendance are as followed. Our student ADA is at ninety-three point three percent. We do want to increase that to ninety-five percent. However, our school is a community school as well, and what we noticed is we have about seventy students that attend Raines that are coming from the apartment complex that's nearby. On days that it rains, there is no covering or awning at the bus stop for those students because the bus doesn't pull into the apartment complex. So on days that it's very, very cold, stormy, or rainy, we noticed that we have a huge decrease in students that come to school. We are working with our site-based council and community members in the area in order to discuss an awning or some covering that can be put there at the bus stop so that students won't have to wait in the rain or wait in the cold for the bus to come. Our staff attendance holds currently at ninety-five point two percent. We generally have very good staff attendance. We had one staff mem, two staff members earlier this year that had babies, but our staff attendance is usually, it usually runs at ninety-five percent. We do not have any external providers at this time. However, we are using our current Title One funds in order to make sure that we have a school interventionist. That interventionist tutors all of our students in the bottom twenty-five for math, those students who are in urgent intervention on STAR, and she tutors classwork. So those students that are in the bottom twenty-five, she provides service to, services to all of those students. Our two, we do have two retired teachers who are academic tutors, and currently, they are working with our students who are on Tier Two and Tier Three in the area of math. In particular, fourth and fifth grade, they are assigned to them. We do use our funds to purchase Read Well intervention material. That is the state-approved resource for Tier Two and Tier Three. We use our funds to upgrade our technology, which is the smart boards and computers. We use those to replace our old ones or ones that, you know, can't have things that are wrong with them, that can't be upgraded or replaced. And we are using them to renew our accelerated reader subscription. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Owens, I had a quick question.
Yes.
Did you raid Toys R Us on their way out of town for the Character Cash Store?
I did not. What, what we do, excuse me, how we fund our store generally is through our partnership with Tools for Life that the district has. Our staff, we make sure that we have the required number of staff members that attend the session so that we get the two thousand dollars. So we've got two thousand dollars for this school year, which helped fund it. And we do plan to attend where I'm scheduled to be on the panel this year. So we plan to attend so we can get it again.
Well, that's great. I had the opportunity to see it earlier this year, and to the board members, it's a sight to see.
And, and the kids love it, they love it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Matt Sheriff, principal at Walton Elementary School. Our overall goal is to increase the proficiency in ELA, reading, math, and science. And reading proficiency in two thousand sixteen seventeen, the achieved data was twenty-one point one. Our projected goal is thirty-five percent. In math, nineteen point nine for two thousand seventeen eighteen, thirty-five. The reading growth for all, forty point six to sixty percent. And that's for the math growth for all, the reading growth for the bottom of the promising twenty-five for ELA, and as well as mathematics. We're also going to increase the proficiency in science from thirty-nine point six percent to fifty-five percent. The leadership team at Walton Elementary School meets regularly to discuss and analyze assessment data and to make instructional adjustments based on that data. We have been strategizing on how to maximize our growth of our promising twenty-five percent, utilizing our resource staff members and flexible scheduling to meet the needs of those scholars and to ensure growth. The promising twenty-five receives forty-five minutes of interventions daily. In order to maximize the growth of the fourth grade, we did some instructional changes. They're now departmentalized, as well as a staff change for fourth grade. Initially, the data did not look promising at the beginning of the school year. So I took the opportunity to do some staff changes to ensure that we're getting the growth that we need for our students. Professional development activities, we do not have a literacy coach at Walton Elementary School. So what I've done, I've collaborated with principals in the area to have teachers attend MDE-sponsored professional developments in the area of math, reading, language arts, and science at Span Elementary and at Boyd. I too have reached out to MDE to have professional development offered at Walton in the area of close reading. At school level, we're continuing to provide professional development in the area of curriculum, MTSS processes, PBIS, and Tools for Life. And our teachers also take part in the Java-like professional developments offered by the district. If you look at the data on number three, we have seen some tremendous, well, some, some growth from six percent up to ten percent growth in most areas, with the exception of fifth grade math and our ELA in third grade plateau that stayed the same. That math in fifth grade was noted to the teacher just introducing some skills on the mathematics curriculum during the time that we administered the second benchmark. So she was well aware that those, that assessment of those standards were just introduced. So those three-point drop was attributed to her just introducing those new skills to the students. So we do expect more growth, positive growth in the area of fifth grade math, as well as positive growth in ELA. Our beginning of the year STAR in reading was forty-four percent proficient. The middle of the year went to fifty-two, that's an eight percent increase. In math, the beginning of the year was sixty-four percent. The middle of the year was seventy percent, that's a six percent increase in growth there as well. Our culture and climate, Walton has an awesome culture and climate. At the end of every month, scholars and staff are recognized for the outstanding accomplishments that they achieve, as well as attendance. Students have an opportunity to participate in PBIS celebrations, popcorn parties, snow cone parties, et cetera, for outstanding behavior in attendance. We also have Go Green celebrations for our students who meet or exceed their STAR results being at or above benchmarks. So we do have a Go Green celebration. We have some awesome community partners. We have three faith-based partners that provide book buddies to our school. Funder in Church, Case Chapel, and First Presbyterian. Case Chapel provide summer reading books to all of our students. In additional to one, in addition to that one summer reading book that they provide, they also provide an additional summer reading book for our students. Faith Presbyterian last year partnered with us to provide activities throughout the summer in helping students meet their summer reading, their summer reading goals and the, the projects that they had to, students had to complete. So that will continue this coming up summer. Faith, Funder in Church has been instrumental in working with us in beautification acts of our school. So we're very, very proud of the work that they do. We also have a collaboration with Ask for Mars Jackson as a part of the linear feeder pattern, where our students participate in Saturday School. So we have Saturday School coming up, this coming up Saturday. The first Saturday we had it, I was pleased that one hundred percent of our students participated, focused on our bubble kids, those students who were in proficiency level three. So we are looking forward to that success carrying on to the end of that program. We also have a partnership, again, with Ask for Mars, where the parents have an opportunity to come to the classrooms and observe teachers during instruction, where they are actually working hand-on-hand with the teachers, learning instructional practices, and have takeaways and receive resources that they can use to support instruction at home. Our site council meets regularly to discuss improvement efforts and the progress toward the school goal in attaining a Level C or higher. Our last meeting focused on our action plan, our school at risk action plan and the progress toward our academic goals. And based on that data, we've seen gains in our tested areas, with the exception of fifth grade math that I mentioned before. Our student attendance is ninety-three point three percent. We are focusing on the goal, have a goal of ninety-five percent. We did have a lot of students in month six who did have the flu. So that was contributed to the decline of our student attendance. Our staff attendance is ninety-five, ninety-five percent. We have great staff attendance, so no issues there. We do not have any external providers. Our Title One funds, currently, we have an instructional assistant that is paid out of Title One that provides additional assistance to third-grade students. He pulls out students needing extra remediation interventions in ELA and mathematics. And we also have an instructional, lead interventionist who's also paid out of Title One. Other funds are used to pay for accelerated reader and instructional supplies for math and ELA and mathematics. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Brown, principal at Wilkins Elementary, where we expect, prepare, and achieve. Our primary goal for this year is to increase academic growth and proficiency in all areas of reading, ELA, and math and science. Looking at number one, if we look at our school's academic goals, our reading proficiency in two thousand sixteen seventeen was ten percent. Our projected goal for this year would be twenty-five percent. Our math proficiency was six point one percent, our projected goal, twenty-five percent. Our reading growth for all was thirty-eight point five percent, and that should be forty-five percent is our perfected, excuse me, projected goal for this year. Our math growth for all, thirty-three percent, thirty-three point six percent for last year, forty percent for this year. Our reading growth of our promising twenty-five percent last year was forty-three point seven. Our projected goal for this year is fifty percent. Our math growth of our promising twenty-five percent for last year was fifty-nine point four percent, and our projected goal is sixty-five percent. Our science proficiency was forty, forty point four percent last year. This year, our projected goal is fifty percent. At this, how are we going to achieve our projected goals? Our leadership team does meet monthly, and we meet once a month, the first Friday of each month. And we do work collaboratively to analyze data, to look at trends, and to look at different areas of proficiency, as, as well as our deficiencies. Some of the things that we would do to implement in our building in order to attain these goals, we do currently use informational text each and every day, and that is a part of our skill drills, our first fifteen minutes of the day. We use informational text to work with the students in our, in grade levels three through five. We have weekly fluency drills in math. And what that looks like, we have a school wide shutdown where we assess the children, pre-K all the way up through fifth grade with their different, their addition, subtraction, multiplication, as well as division, math facts. And the data is posted in the hallway each week of those children who attain a score of eighty percent or higher. Use of classworks and fast-forward. And as we previously stated, some of the other principals, we're using our classworks with our promising twenty-five percent, ensuring the growth of those students, as well as we have created a schedule for new students who will be positively impacted, and we've identified our bubble students. Monthly progress monitoring using STAR reading and math. We have bell-to-bell instruction each and every, each and every day that's aligned to the standards and the district pacing, which is supported by ongoing remediation and interventions. And that's aligned with our skill drills. We do use closely our, the standards report from STAR because the research states that there is a direct correlation between the projection of what we will score on our map assessment in the spring as aligned with what our assessments are on our three assessments throughout the year with our STAR. We do have all of our personnel, we have, we started our boot camp earlier this year, and actually- And actually in August, all of our support personnel are housed in the classrooms. We have an uninterrupted literacy block where all, all hands are on deck. We have everyone from our, from our librarian, our music teacher, all support staff. They're housed in those tested grades in third through fifth grade, providing additional support, remediation, pullouts and as well as small group instruction. We do have a power hour each and every day. Hours on Mondays, we focus on, on Monday's reading. Tuesdays, we have mathematics. Wednesdays, we do, we focus on writing and our science is on Fridays. And that is for our extended hour each day. We also utilize our interventionists to provide interventions for our tier-three scholars, our staff. We utilize grade level team meetings, focus instructional team, the FIT meetings, professional learning communities and all those different things to share best practices, analyze our data and to determine and specific research-based strategies that will assist us in moving our scholars forward. Number two, what is our professional, what are our professional developments activities that will occur for this month? Our focus will be on, again, we do our focus instructional team meetings. We're going to provide additional, we have new staff members. So there's a need to provide ongoing professional development in that area. And we're going to also, and that is scheduled for, that's this Thursday on the twenty-second. We will have a provided refresher on three point eight writing model as well, which is on Tuesday next week, March the twenty-seventh. As we look at our data, number three, at the, for our STAR data, STAR reading at the beginning of the year, our students scored twenty-nine percent. In the middle of the year, it was thirty-five percent. We had an increase of about six percent, of six percent. Our STAR math had overall forty-eight percent at the beginning of the school year. Middle, we had fifty-three percent and we did have an increase of five percent. A comparison of our benchmark data, benchmarks one and two in language arts in third grade. And I would like to say that in all of our content areas on our benchmarks, this last time, we did have an increase excluding third grade E L A. Those scores were in third grade for benchmark one, had a score of forty-five point seven percent. And benchmark two, forty-three point eight percent and there was a decrease of one point nine. Fourth grade, thirty-three percent on benchmark one, forty point seven percent on benchmark two, which was an increase of seven point seven percent. Fifth grade E L A, thirty-two point three percent on benchmark one, thirty-nine point, thirty-nine percent on benchmark two, which is an increase of six point seven percent. In mathematics on benchmark one, third grade, forty point nine percent on benchmark one. On benchmark two, forty-two point eight percent, an increase of one point nine. And on our fourth graders scored thirty-seven point two percent on benchmark one, forty-two percent on benchmark two with an increase of four point eight percent. Fifth grade mathematics, thirty-three point one percent on benchmark one to a thirty-four point four percent on benchmark two, which is an increase of one percent. For our benchmark, our science assessments for benchmark one, our fifth grader scored thirty-six point eight percent on benchmark one and thirty-nine point six percent on benchmark two for an increase of two point eight percent. For our culture and our climate, what do we do? We do tons of things to promote positive learning in our building. One thing I always tell my parents and my teachers, I always want the parents and the children to enter the building and never want to leave. So our environment initially, when you walk in, we want it to be that way where it looks conducive from the door. So we really strive for that. We ensure that we offer positive incentive, we incentivize not only our students but our staff members as well. We do student of the month, of course, for each class level in the class. Then we also do it building-wide and all that data is posted and the pictures of the children is posted in the foyer of the building. We also do, excuse me, staff members of the month. And the staff members include certified staff, classified staff, then an additional support staff as well as a team of the month. We also display our attendance and our discipline. At Wilkins, we're very transparent. We do not have secrets. Everything is posted for immediate reward or for immediate correction. And we also do daily intercom shout-outs and pull-ups over the intercom that's each and every day. We also review our building level and bus level, the expectations over the intercom each and every day. Just today, we participated, our adopters, our faith-based adopter Lynch Street Seminole Church came in and a representative, and we did a walkthrough of the school. The person, she's a retired principal and she gave very, very good feedback. And so they work closely with us in coming in and assisting us with whatever we need in our buildings. We also have a learning walk through the M D E scheduled on tomorrow. And that will happen, and our M D E literacy coach is Ms. Cortez Angram. And she will be spearheading that, but we all will participate in that learning walk. We have P B I S celebrations. We have those monthly school-wide, also weekly in the classrooms. We do such things as, and my favorite is the powwow with the principal. The children earn time to just sit and chat with me and you'll be amazed at some of the things that we discuss. Pickles on the playground, pick-a-prize, we just did that in February. And this month, we have kickball scheduled. We also had star recognition not long ago, it was a not-so-ordinary star celebration. Those were the children who attained growth on the middle-of-year star assessment. P B I celebrations, as I said, not only for the children, but we do those for our staff as well. Perfect attendance, birthday shout-outs, happy, just caught being good. And we really, this, this helps with our attendance as well for our staff members. Number five, for our family and community engagement, we do conduct community chats. Our next community chat is actually, it is a literacy night out and that is scheduled for next, the Thursday, March the twenty-ninth. And that is, where all grade levels will come in and we'll review different components of the testing. The parents will take, participate in taking assessments, the map practice assessments. We also conducted, in February, we did a third grade community chat where the third grade parents were able to come in and take assessments at the school and just receive pertinent information about what the children were receiving in the classrooms in order to prepare them for the assessment that's coming up in April. We do Mondays with mothers and Fridays with fathers. And those occur on the first Mondays of each month and the first Fridays of each month and what that entails. We invite the parents in, they come in for classroom visits to come in and actually, you know, sit in the day of the life of their students and also go and eat lunch with the children. So we had really good turnouts for that. We, our parents did recently attend the M D E's, the third grade parent meeting in February. And we will have upcoming Math and Science Nights in April. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Horton and I am the Principal of Wolver Heights Elementary School. Our mission is to provide the highest quality education in a secure, positive and challenging environment for all scholars fostered by a cooperative effort among school, parents and community. Our vision is to create a challenging learning environment that encourages high expectations for success. We do have three goals. One goal is to increase proficiency in E L A, math, mathematics and science. Also to increase our growth in E L A and mathematics and to increase data and to decrease our discipline referrals. When we looked at our twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen achieved data, reading proficiency was twenty-one percent. Our goal is to be at thirty percent. This year, mathematic proficiency was fifteen point four percent. Our goal is to be at thirty percent. The reading growth for all was forty-one point four percent. Our goal is sixty percent. Mathematic growth for all was forty-one percent. Our goal is sixty percent. Reading growth for the promising twenty-five was forty-nine point seven percent. Goal is sixty percent. Mathematic growth of the bottom, of the promising twenty-five was fifty-five percent and our goal is sixty percent. Science proficiency was thirty-two point six percent. Our goal is thirty-five percent. Professional development at Wolver Heights is based up on data, teacher input, learning walks and classroom observations as well as a needs assessment. The presenters thus far has been the principal, assistant principal, members of the school leadership team and members of the J P S curriculum department. We have discussed and presented on curriculum documents, the M D E blueprints, our scope and sequence, using weekly data to drive instruction, the Mississippi Professional Growth System, effective instructional practices, vocabulary, writing rubrics, and P B I S has been some of the topics. When we looked at our benchmark one data and compared it to benchmark two, we did see growth in all areas. In reading proficiency, we saw an eighteen point seven percent gain. In math proficiency, we saw a thirty-three point one percent gain. Reading growth for all, we saw thirty-six point three percent gain. For math growth all, we saw twenty-three point six percent gain. Our promising twenty-five in reading, we saw a twenty-two point four percent gain. For our promising twenty-five percent in mathematics, we saw twenty-one point six percent gain. And in science, we saw twenty-two percent gain. Our culture and our climate, we start each morning off with our morning announcements. And there is emphasis on the monthly core traits as well as the tools for life suggestions for conflict resolution. Our morning announcements also include our tiger pledge, which is based on the beliefs for effective social skills. Recognition and shout-outs to staff and students are included during the morning and the afternoon announcements. We also utilize M T S S to ensure students have the needed interventions to replace the inappropriate behaviors. Our culture and climate is also supported by assembly programs, dances, movie days and other incentives. We do have incentives for staff as well as our students. P T A and our community partners help us with those incentives. And in order to prepare for emergency crisis, we do share our crisis intervention plan with our staff. There has been great discussion of that in P L Cs. We do conduct our monthly drills. For family and community engagement, we do have a minimum of five P T A meetings, two site-based council meetings for you, per year, as well as other forums and activities. We do have several community partners and volunteers that actively engage in the educational endeavors of our students by serving as tutors, mentors and guest speakers as well as book buddies. Our student A D A for month six, February, was ninety-four point, ninety-four percent. For our staff, it was ninety-two point five percent. We don't have any external providers. However, we do have support being provided by Tools for Life as well as the National Institute of School Leadership. With the allocation of title funds, we would like to order projection lamps to enhance instruction in areas where there is limited internet access as well as purchase additional laptops to fill up one of our mobile cards. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kwidwea Breeland, Principal of Kirksey Middle School, where we work every day to prepare our students for success by ensuring that they are ready, responsible and respectful. Our goal this year is to move from a two sixty-three in F to a three thirty-five C. Our reading proficiency on last year was a fifteen point five. Our goal for this year is twenty-five percent. Our math proficiency was eighteen point four percent. Our goal is twenty-five percent for this year. The reading growth for all was fifty-two point eight percent. Our goal for this year is sixty percent. The math growth for all was forty-two point five percent and our goal for this year is sixty percent. Reading growth for the promising twenty-five was fifty-eight point five. Our goal this year is sixty percent. Math growth of the promising twenty-five is, was forty-seven point three on last year. This year, our goal is sixty percent. Our science proficiency on last year was only twenty-eight point seven percent and our goal this year is forty-five percent. Some things that we put in place, the leadership team and myself, as far as how to reach that goal of a three thirty-five. One thing we did, we looked at our, our master schedule and we did some course changes. We implemented independent study courses, which students who scored a two or below on math were placed in these classes instead of traditional electives. And they attend those classes for ninety-four minutes every other day. It's A B block schedule. And during this time, these students are taught by certified teachers as well as certified interventionists who focus on prerequisite skills for either E L A or math. Right now, there are total one hundred and sixty-six students enrolled in those classes. We also have one hundred and nineteen students enrolled in class works for E L A or math. All our sixth graders attend a reading class and seventy-five percent of them are enrolled in Read One Eighty. All sixth graders receive math daily through the use of compensatory math class. All of our students are required to complete, to complete at least two lessons per week in USA test prep, E L A and math, which are online programs that are purchased with our Title One funds. All students enrolled in accelerated math classes also spend ninety-four minutes a week completing an online math course through Odysseyware. That's in seventh and eighth grade. Every Wednesday, our teachers provide tier-two instruction via pull-outs for ninety-four minutes during their instructional planning block. So they do not get a planning at all on Wednesday. Accelerator Reader has been pushed very heavily this year. As far as professional development, some professional development school-wide that we have already provided, lesson planning, engaging students in strategic thinking, standards of mathematical practice, effectively implementing learning stations to enhance instruction and of course, classroom management. We did a number of these P Ds very early on in the year so that we could have full implementation. And these things are revisited, reevaluated during our P L Cs and FIT meetings that happen every other week. Update on instruction assessment, looking at benchmark one and benchmark two proficiency. If you can see right in front of you, on the first benchmark in sixth grade, E L A, we had twenty-one percent proficiency. On the second benchmark, our sixth grader scored a proficiency of fifty-six percent, which was an amazing increase. Our seventh graders on benchmark one scored thirty-two percent. They dropped significantly on benchmark two to only thirteen percent. Eighth grade, twenty-one percent in E L A and they increased to twenty-eight percent. Overall, we had a score of thirty-two point three proficiency in E L A, which exceeds our goal of twenty-five percent. And all grade levels exceeded our goal of sixty percent growth other than, except for seventh grade. In math, sixth grade on both benchmarks had a proficiency rate of twenty-one percent. Seventh grade, benchmark one, thirty-three percent. They dropped to twenty-nine percent on benchmark two. Eighth grade had a proficiency
Eighth grade had a proficiency rate of only twelve percent on Benchmark One, and grew to twenty-one percent. Overall, we currently have a twenty-three point six proficiency rate in mathematics, which did not meet our goal of twenty-five percent, but we still have a few more weeks to get there. Our science, thirty-four percent proficiency on the first benchmark, and fifty percent on the second benchmark, which has exceeded our goal of forty-five percent. As far as culture and climate, we have monthly PBIS celebrations for those students whose behavior has garnered them that, in order to be able to go through that. We have accelerated reader parties. We also have weekly brain breaks for those students who have met their goals with their online programs through Class Works, USA Test Prep, and Mobile Max. Family and community engagement. We have our monthly PTA meetings. Matter of fact, we had an eighth grade parent meeting in collaboration with Callaway tonight. I think that went well. Also, we have had a Fathers versus Sons basketball game this past month. We're trying to increase our male involvement in our school. We only have three males teachers in our building, so. And for next month, we actually have a huge boys and men forum and lunch and plan, which we're inviting fifty men from the community to come in and have lunch with all our males in our building. So we're looking forward to that. ADA for Month Six, it was ninety-three point nine. Like some of the other schools, we have a number of students that are walkers. About eighty-five percent of our students are car riders or walkers. So if the weather is bad, they won't come to school. ADA for the staff is ninety-seven percent. We have no external partners. As far as our Title One Funds, would be used to increase the number of licenses for Read One Eighty, replace five smart board panels, as well as purchase Chromebook cards for every math and ELA classroom. Any questions?
Thank you so much, Ms. Breeland.
Good night.
If I may say briefly, this is Dean Harrison, and I hope some of the principals are still there. But it has been so refreshing to be able to hear from each of you and to learn about the impact of your work. The school principal is the mind, heart, and soul of the school, and the work you have accomplished under such a challenging time this year is amazing. It's clear to me that our principals, who have been here tonight, are moving forward. You're making thoughtful decisions and are documenting your progress and your challenges to increase student achievement and proficiency. I know I have been so educated and so encouraged by each of your remarks tonight. You are to be commended.
Excuse me, Dr. Harrison.
Appreciate your leadership and work.
Dr. Harrison.
Yes.
Hey, we have four more. Five, I'm sorry, we have five more.
Five more.
Kirksey is the last one on my list.
Yes, ma'am, that's the last plan that we have. Yeah, that's the last school improvement plan, but we have five.
I'm just so amazed.
Yes, ma'am, we have five more.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Keisha Rankin. I am the principal of Van Winkle Elementary, where we are creating a culture of excellence. Our academic goals are to increase student achievement, and also to make sure that students are achieving in a safe and positive environment. If you look at our data chart, you can see our achieved data for 2016 and our projected goals. For reading proficiency, we had eleven point eight percent. Our projected goal is twenty percent. Math proficiency, nine point five percent. Our projected goal is twenty percent. Reading growth for all, forty-two point six percent. The projected goal is sixty-five percent. Math growth for all, thirty-seven point five percent. Projected goal, sixty-five percent. Reading growth for promising twenty-five, sixty-three point two. Projected goal, sixty-five percent. Math growth for promising twenty-five, forty-six point seven. Projected goal, sixty-five percent. Science proficiency, thirty-seven point five. Projected goal is thirty percent. Our leadership team meets regularly to discuss data regarding student performance, attendance, discipline, and to make adjustments that align with our projected goals. Number two, the professional development that we've had at Van Winkle for the month of March includes data analysis, writing, multi-tier systems of support, Class Works, accelerated math, Stark Custom, Lost Links, and also MAP-A training. Update on instruction. Comparing between Benchmark One and Benchmark Two, we increased in every area except for our promising twenty-five, which is something that we're looking closely at. The culture and climate. One thing that we did this month, we had kite day for those students who were flying high with perfect attendance. Family and community engagement. Our adopter, Energy, they presented a robotics presentation sponsored by Entergy, who's our adopter, and our fifth grade students really enjoyed that. Our Site Council members were actively engaged in conversation regarding the school's Ten O Three A funds. The council also provided input and recommendations on ways to engage parents. Our staff and student attendance for the student, it is ninety-three point seven three percent. Our staff ADA is ninety-eight point six percent. Title One Funds, we are currently being used to purchase accelerated reading, technology, and also to fund some additional staff members. For our Ten O Three Funds, we actually, for the fall, we hired an interventionist assistant who works with our school-level interventionists, and also we purchased accelerated math and Stark Custom. Any questions? All right, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great evening. I am Laquanta Nelson, the principal at Blackburn Laboratory Middle School, where we are determined to become a high-performing middle school. Our core values drive what we do in our school. We call it the Jag Way. And we're all in, we walk the talk, we have high standards, and we know that there are absolutely no limits to what we can do if we are working together. So what you'll see there in our projected goals are lofty goals. They're aggressive goals. But we realize that as a school that's been an F for five, six consecutive years, that we've got to make some drastic changes, and we've got to do it now. We say it every day, if not us, then who? If not now, then when? So what you see in front of you again are aggressive goals, but we're doing the work. Not only are the expectations in place, but we're doing the work to definitely meet those goals as well. As everyone has said before, our three goals are, they mirror everyone else, is to increase our academic achievement, both focusing on proficiency and growth. We also want to increase our ADA. And then lastly, we, in our building, wanted to focus on increased demonstration of positive behaviors. But even with all of that, if someone just said, Nelson, what are y'all doing at Blackburn? I would say we're focusing on literacy. On average, our students are three point six grade levels behind in reading, which of course translates itself in everything that they do. And so with focusing on reading, we're guaranteeing that we'll have greater success in any assessment that you put in front of them. We're very excited to be in full year of implementation of accelerated reader. To date, my babies have read seventy-two million words, which is a drastic difference from last year. We were at about ten million words for the entire year last year. So we're at seventy-two million, and our goal for the remainder of the year is to hit a hundred million. Our kids are working very hard in reading. It's not abnormal at this point to walk into Blackburn and see a child walking down the hallway, reading their book to wherever it is that they're heading. As far as professional development, of course, our needs assessment, our data, informal observations, formal observations, what teachers say they need, what students say they need, are driving what we do with PD. We are heavily focusing on quality Tier One instruction because we feel like if that is strong, that will definitely take care of some of the rest of the deficits that we have. Differentiated instruction, learning centers. So if you walk into quite a few of our classrooms, it feels like an elementary school. And we feel like that's a necessity since we have such drastic performances in students' abilities. You know, you're in a classroom, you have a child that's functioning on a two-point-three grade level, and then you also have one that's functioning on a tenth grade level. So how do you meet the needs of all of those students in that one classroom? And so we are taking on the stance of differentiated instruction through learning centers and stations. And also, too, you see some of the rest of the things that we're doing to focus there as well. As far as update on instruction and assessment, so you'll see where we started with MAP-2017 with our proficiency. Benchmark One, we almost met our goal in two of the three areas from Benchmark One. Benchmark Two, we learned some lessons, and we started today analyzing that. We made some changes in the way that we did assessments on Benchmark Two, and our data reflects that. We had issues with Wi-Fi. We tested two sessions a day because we had to meet in that window. And so we learned some lessons there that we appreciate learning now instead of in twenty-four days when our students start testing. So we're definitely in the process of analyzing and addressing those deficits there. But even within that, what you see are proficiency marks. And as I noted, my students came, we began the year at over ninety percent of our students functioning well below grade level. So our success has been in growth. But that is not noted there. But again, that is where we are planning on winning this aggressive game that we stated for ourselves. And climate and culture, again, if someone were to ask me, what's been your greatest success? I would tell you there in climate and culture, that we focus so much on cultivating an environment where there is a framework, a high expectations for students in what they do. And so we're seeing great results there. We were fortunate enough to be awarded a $10,000 grant from the Junior League of Jackson, as far as PBIS is concerned. It did not change our approach. Our approach is the same whether we have zero dollars or a million dollars, but it did definitely have a positive impact on the type of incentives that we can provide for our students. So they've experienced some amazing things this year because of that grant. We're going to wrap up the year with our Model Scholars of the Year going to New Orleans on an all-expense-paid trip to the Audubon there. And for some of our students, they've never been to New Orleans, and so this is a big, big, big deal for them, but we're excited about that. We begin each week with a Monday morning motivation power-up assembly, where we celebrate our successes from the previous week. We celebrate Jags of the Week. And those are students who have focused on their efforts because, again, if we just focus on proficiency in my school, it'll deter some students because they are so far away from that. But if we're focusing on academic efforts, are you putting forth the work to make the gains that you need to make? And so we do that every week. We celebrate the teachers. We have kudos walls and all the things that are allowing us to, again, cultivate an environment that our students can be their most successful selves. Family and community engagement opportunities. We launched a series of parent and community events that were purposed at empowering partnerships. So we began our year with a Power of Community Breakfast Brunch, where we brought in community leaders, and we just discussed what was going on in our school, the areas that we were winning in, and the areas that we needed support, and we just had some open dialogue. And because of that, we've had great support this year in any and everything that we've asked from our community. As far as Site Council, as recently as, you know, the last few weeks with our extended day, we were not one of the schools that were fortunate enough to have the grant for the food. However, our community said, what do you need? And we were like, okay, about three o'clock, our babies are hungry. My big babies are hungry because they go to lunch at eleven-thirty. And so I kid you not, every other day, we have a truck that comes to the front of our building with snacks, and they say, hey, we heard, and we're here. And so we're very appreciative of that. Staff and student attendance, like everyone else has noted, we're in the middle of a space that we have a lot of walkers, so that is affected based on the weather. We are currently at ninety-three point seven percent, and then staff ADA is ninety-five percent. We were one of the folks that were fortunate enough to have the Bailey Education Group for twenty days, and that was between October and November. And so we were fortunate enough to have them to come in. We feel that because of their ELA support, we did see some gains in our ELA, in our reading. They were very intentional, and we focused on writing. Writing was a major weakness for us last year. And so we focused in on what they were going to do with us for that limited amount of time. And so we've definitely seen some gains in our students' writing there. As far as Title Funds and newly allocated resources, we are moving forward. We have piloted Achieve Three Thousand, and we already, just with a short amount of time, have seen great gains in, again, the writing piece. And so we're going to have to pick up that bill for next year, since it was a pilot this year. And so some of our funds will go to that, as well as Chromebooks, so that we can actually access this program that is online. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, all. I am Justin Green, Principal of Deep Powell Academy of Military Science. I make sure that I keep my eyes on my superintendent because being an officer in the Army, as well as a middle school principal, I can keep talking, especially about my school. Our mission is plain and simple. And if you ask any student, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade at Powell, our goal is to provide the best education to get our students prepared to be the best ninth graders that they can be, when most of them go to Callaway High School. And looking at the academic goals, you see our achievement data for 2016-17, which was a two-twenty-four. However, you see two-seventy-five in your paper, but we have a bold goal of three-thirty. Two-seventy-five is written, and that is the goal that we sent to MDE. However, if you walk inside of Powell Middle School, the very first poster you see is going to say three-thirty, and we are going to achieve that by the numbers. And by the numbers, it's a very strategic attack of what we have with our students and looking at what it takes to get there. And if you break it down by the numbers, then it's more easy to get it. That old saying, they say, how do you eat an elephant? You know, one bite at a time. So when looking at our goal, our bold goal of twenty percent proficiency in math and ELA, that's simply ninety students, ninety students, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. If we get ninety students to be proficient. For overall growth of fifty percent, that's simply two-hundred-and-twenty students. And the bottom sixty, bottom twenty-five percent, or promising twenty-five percent, that's just a hundred-and-fifteen students to get to that sixty percent. So what we do is that we talk to every teacher, and we do a lot of our different interventions, and we base it on the numbers with the students. So let me go into what is our school action plan and talking about that. We've identified the students per level in benchmark assessment, as well as per the MAP assessment. And one thing that we look at is that we have a large portion of students that are on the bubble. So what we want to do is we want to attack those students strategically and looking at the MAP interpretive guide and those highly, those high points, those questions on the test to make sure that we hit those. And we'll do that through several district interventions that have been put in place. And we're very fortunate that we have a lot of support from the school district. We do have a lead teacher that comes twice a week in ELA, a lead teacher that comes twice a week in math, and a lead teacher that comes once a week in science to work with our eighth grade science students. We identify students that they'll be pulling, and they work directly with the students. And then another thing that we do is that we have the teachers shadow those lead teachers to use some of those best practices and principles that they have. One thing we also have is an after-school tutorial program that is fully funded by our community partners, the One Hundred Black Men, as well as Jackson State Air Force ROTC. That tutorial program did start on today, and we had about twenty tutors that showed up. These are college students. Some of them are aspiring educators, so we give them a firsthand look at what we need when they come to Powell to be teachers in the next year or two, hopefully. We also have the Powell Push. The Powell Push is where we have every teacher in the building, they identify five to seven students that they're going to make a promise and say that you're going to be successful. Just five to seven students. And if we look at that, five to seven, then that's two-hundred-and-twenty students right there. And if every teacher do their part, and what they do is two times a week during their planning period for the first hour, they pull those students, and they strategically work on those students' deficits. For our tier group, Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three, we have several interventions, Read One Eighty, Imagine Math. We have Class Work Study Island. These are all of these district programs that you heard about throughout the night. We do implement them at Powell with fidelity. Going on to professional development, due to, we have a large deficit of certified teachers at Powell. So as a result, our professional development this year was aimed at the basics of being a teacher. And those big things are classroom management, lesson planning, teaching in the block schedule, and reading and understanding data in order to implement it. So all of our professional development is pretty much up until now has been based on lesson planning and those fundamentals needed to be an efficient teacher. And we're also investing in these lim- And we're also investing in these limited service teachers that we have in hopes of when they get certified that they'll be back next year working at Powell or within the school district. And we know that we have put the work in to lay that foundation for them. We kind of look at it as a glass half full instead of half empty. True, we do have fifteen limited service or vacancies and that accounts for fifty percent of our staff. But in working it and when you look at our data, you'll show that it doesn't look like we have fifteen vacancies, fifteen limited service or vacancies. So, in rolling into the data, one thing that I want to point out is, is that the charts that you see in front of you from the sixteen seventeen map going into the benchmark, one big thing is, and I know it goes kind of what the Principal of Blackburn, Dr. Nelson showed is, is that we understand that our students, that we don't have a high number of proficient kids. So, we look at growth and we look at where we can move that needle. And we saw that needle can be moved from students going in the bottom twenty-five percent and moving up to get that point as well as students going from level two to level three to that passing, being very strategic at it. From the MAP to Benchmark One, we lowered in math, ELA, and science the number of students that was tested minimum. Right now, that is our biggest gain and we're very proud of it. And strategically, we had all of these great plans starting the school year out for the bottom twenty-five percent. And then, when we took the first benchmark, we realized and I had a meeting with Dr. King and it was like, the bulk of our kids are at level three. So, we had all of these tutorial sessions set up for bottom twenty-five percent. So, now we're like, all right, we have a high number of students at level three. Let's talk about moving from level three to proficient. So, now we have identified those, all the programs that I've talked about with the lead teachers coming in as well as the after-school tutorial, those are our students that are level two, level three. And we concentrate on our level one, bottom twenty-five percent throughout the day using classworks and as well as the principal boot camp that I have where I get kids in the morning and they get on the computer and we work on, we work on classworks. In looking at from Benchmark to Bench, Benchmark One to Benchmark Two, I do want to highlight the growth. We do have our first fit meeting about Benchmark Two data on Thursday. But in looking at where we move, it is just phenomenal, the growth from Benchmark One to Benchmark Two. Overall, in math, fifty percent of our kids grew from Benchmark One to Benchmark Two. Thirty-one point eight percent grew in ELA. And looking at the bottom twenty-five percent or the promising twenty-five percent in ELA, fifty-two point four grew. And astonishing eighty-six point four percent grew in math, the promising twenty-five percent. And it goes directly in conjunction with our growth goals that we have that you saw in the bottom chart there. And we're strategically going in and we're looking at these kids to ensure that we can maintain that growth and also move them to where we need them to be. Everything is individually based. I tell them all the time that their education is not a team sport, it's an individual sport. Although we know in middle school, it's all about my friends, but they need to understand it's about them. And talking about the culture and climate of our school, over the four years, we have seen a decrease in discipline every year. We always talk about culture and we know the community is a cornerstone in that fact. So, we make sure as the administrators that we go out into the community, we go to Presidential Hills, we go to all the different areas to let the people know that we're here. And it also helps that the same principle has been there consistently throughout with the family scene. So, you can have a parent, somebody that's upset and they can be like, well, I trust you because you took care of my other son and my other daughter, which is very important. And that goes directly into the community and family engagement. We have three mentorship groups for our young boys sponsored through the Hundred Black Men of Jackson, Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Amped Up. And we're also one of the schools to have the ambassadors for the, the A Team, which is the ambassadors for the Mega and Ever, excuse me, Mega and Merly Everest Foundation for African American Males. So, we work very hard to, to let our youth, let our boys know what it takes to be positive. And these tutors come in weekly and sometimes they come in even more than they have to and they check on grades and they talk to teachers to show our kids that someone cares. And they sit in on our leadership team meetings. So, going to ADA, we have a student ADA of ninety-one point four eight. Flu season hit us pretty hard. Staff ADA is ninety-seven point eight percent. And I talk to my teachers all the time and I say, we, we maybe have limited service teachers, but my limited service teachers come to school and they do the best they can every time. For the summary of services from the external providers, we had twenty initial days that came from the Green Educational Services from our Algebra One students. At first, we didn't have Algebra One students identified. Then in mid-October, we decided we'll have Algebra One class. They came in and gave not only just the twenty days, they volunteered several other days. And by the first benchmark assessment, we had eighty-three percent of the students that were projected to pass and thirty-three percent of those students were level three or higher, level four or higher, excuse me. As other principals said and talking about my ten oh three A funding, we need to purchase additional computer charts and Chromebooks to help with the sixth graders who have a lack of that computer usage. We also wanted to purchase consulting days again with the Green Educational Services and additional purchase of supplies and materials. We also purchased one academic tutor and we used additional twenty-two thousand dollars for online programs and renewals. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mr. Boyd, Principal of Cywell Middle School, where we ensure all of our students are destined for success both academically and behaviorally. And our mission is to focus on respect, effective communication, and leadership with a passion to develop lifelong learners destined for success. Moving into number one, looking at our school goals and our progress towards those goals. Twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, we had an achieved data of two twenty-five. For twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, we were realistic at the beginning of the school year. So, we looked at our growth model, we looked at the accountability model, we looked at our proficiency levels and our growth levels. In order to get a two eighty, we needed twenty percent in each of the proficiency levels and fifty-five percent in all of the growth boxes. So, we will work aggressively to obtain that during this school year. The school leadership team is comprised of all of our team leaders, which is known as our faculty senate. And we meet weekly to address the strengths, the weaknesses, and the opportunities and the threats which impact our student data. And based on the information from MAP data from last year, we see that there is a need in ELA math and in science. And so, in order to get this, as aforementioned, we want to have twenty percent of proficiency in all of those areas and fifty-five percent in the growth model. In order to reach the bottom twenty-five or the promising twenty-five, the district has chosen to use classwork. And so, we use this every, we use this every day with our students in order to move them. The program addresses the deficiencies of our struggling students. And each week, our team meets and when we meet, we look at their data, be it their common formatives or the formative assessments or the district, their district data. And from this, we adjust our instruction and we reteach and we teach in a different way. And we go back to the data and we look at it again and we continually address this with fidelity. Our plans for professional development to date, Cywell Middle School has participated in small group instruction. And our goal is to grow teacher leaders. So, many, many of our professional developments are driven by our teachers. So, small group instruction, data disaggregation, the crafting of effective lesson planning, MTSS, and formative assessments. And we also see that there is a need to address student diversity with our ELL population and also with our subgroup with our African American males. And for this cause, some teachers will attend professional development during the summer. And also, we have Professor Ovira who will come in to help with our ELL students as well. Number three, to adjust, an update on our instruction and the assessment from Benchmark to Benchmark One to Benchmark Two, there was a decrease according to our data. We were at Benchmark One, a one sixty-six when you add up all of the numbers there. But in Benchmark Two, we was, we were two zero one, we are two zero one right now. But there was a decline in the promising twenty-five. And we attribute this to the level of complexity of the questioning, the classroom assessment that the teachers were creating. They need to mirror the items that the students will see on the assessment. And for this cause in math, our teachers are working with the performance-based task. And with this, the students are able to apply what they know from the content to their work. So, we're looking at this every single day. Also, I made a decision on yesterday. We did see growth with the sixth grade. A majority of our students grew in sixth grade. So, we took the sixth grade teachers on yesterday and today, we moved them to the seventh grade in our power hour. And so, we were placing them with the seventh grade teachers in order for us to realize growth. So, it was a hard decision to make, but in order for us to move, decisions must be made. And also, we're, we're utilizing the power hour. And with this power hour, the elective team goes in with our students, those bottom twenty-five, and we will remediate with them. We will do some differentiated instruction and we will also have meaningful instruction with the teachers, with our students. As for our culture and our climate, the PBIS committee has created a calendar of events to promote positive learning. We choose to acknowledge our students, our teachers, and our staff each month. And also, our teachers are given duty-free lunches and also they're given a gift card and the students are recognized as well and they are allowed at times to wear jeans. And we've also partnered with Pastor Hosea Hines and the Christ Community Church to assist with the needs of our students and the staff. As for family and community engagement, each nine weeks, at the fourth week, we have something that's called Progressive Wednesday. And with this Progressive Wednesday, the parents are able to come in to look at data. They're able to ask questions about the students' grades and also to observe, to speak to their behavior as well. The site council meets to address issues that impact the learning environment at the school. And for our ADA, right now, we saw in January and February, there was a decline in our ADA. And we attribute that to, there are some teachers who are on FMLA and also due to sickness as well. And for our external providers, we have MDE. MDE has come in to give us some online, I mean, some onsite coaching as well as the Green Consulting Group. And we use the Green Consulting Group for our Algebra One. On last year, all the Algebra One students there was, they scored a PO one. But this year, with help with the Green Group and with a strong math teacher, all of our students scored the first benchmark, a PO four, and some of them were a three B. And lastly, number eight, our newly allocated resources that impact student achievement and their outcome, we've chosen to order technology, to order books for our library, and also to have our teachers to participate in professional development. And we really believe that this will impact student data. So, we're working aggressively at Cywell Middle School. We want to be a C, but right now, we're looking at a D and we're going to move our school because we're doing, we're doing things every day, innovative things in order to move our students and to move our school. There any questions of us? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Chakana Anderson, interim principal at Callaway High School, where we are on a mission to greatness every day in every way. The vision of Callaway High School is to produce the best-prepared scholars to succeed in college, be innovative in the workplace, and become lifelong learners with the aspirations to serve others. Some of our goals are to improve proficiency in all areas, to improve growth in the areas of math and ELA, to improve our college and career readiness rate, and to increase our graduation rate to seventy-five percent. We also, one of our goals is also to continue moving. Last year, we moved from an F to a D. This year, we continue, we plan to continue up the ladder and our goal is to be a C with a six twenty. In twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen seventeen, in the areas of ELA proficiency, we were at a twenty point four percent. This year, our goal is to be, reach thirty-five percent. Math proficiency last school year was ten point five percent. This year, our goal is thirty percent. ELA growth for all was seventy-three percent. Our goal this year is eighty-five percent. Math growth for all was seventy-two point three percent. This year, our goal is eighty-five percent. ELA growth for our promising twenty-five last year was eighty-three point eight percent and this year, our goal is ninety-five percent. Math growth for our promising twenty-five last year was ninety-four point six percent and this year, our growth is ninety-five percent. Science proficiency on last year was eight point two percent and our goal this year is twenty percent. U.S. history proficiency last year was fifteen point nine percent and our goal this year is thirty percent. Our graduation rate was sixty-eight point six percent and our goal is seventy-five percent. Our college and career readiness rate was eight point four percent and we plan to increase fifteen, to fifteen percent. Our acceleration was thirty point four percent and we plan to increase to forty-five percent this year. Our school leadership team, after reviewing our twenty sixteen seventeen data, our star data and data of incoming ninth grade students, we decided on the following. We decided to add more compensatory courses to our master's schedule, which will allow our students that we have identified as low-performing students more time with a certified teacher. We have fully implemented the district's fit process. Teachers track students' data using data walls in classrooms. Students are also responsible for tracking their data using student trackers. Before each formative and benchmark assessment, we conduct subject, subject area bootcamp, bootcamps. And after each assessment, we have what we call subject area data days, where each day, the core area teachers meet to spend hours with the data to dig in a plan, to develop a plan on how to move forward. Professional developments. We have had professional developments on how to effectively use centers in a high school classroom. We have had professional development on the effective implementation of the Madeleine, Madeleine Hanner Lesson Planning Process. We have had professional development on how to segregate data. We have had professional development on how to maximize every minute of the ninety-four minute block. We have also had professional development training by our district lead teachers in all four core areas. We are looking for or seeking professional development in the area of how to better serve our EL population. Our benchmark data. Benchmark one, in the area of algebra, we had seventeen percent. Benchmark two, we were at three percent. English two, benchmark one, we had ninety-nine percent proficiency. On benchmark two, we had nine percent proficiency. Biology one, for benchmark one, we had proficiency of thirty-five percent. For benchmark two, we had proficiency of twenty-four percent. U.S. history for benchmark one, proficiency was twenty-four percent. For benchmark two was nineteen percent. Culture and climate. We created and maintained an environment where the students and teachers shared the vision of the school and felt a part of the decisions that impacted the school. Administrators made sure the faculty and staff and students are working, teaching, and learning in a safe and clean environment. We established a shared vision of high academic achievement. We recognize students monthly as Students of the Month. We also recognize teachers monthly as Teachers of the Month. We host PBIS activities and provide incentives to those students who exhibit positive behavior and academic success. We host honors programs and provide incentives to those students who excel academically. We also host academic pep rallies to increase students' motivation to achieve academic success. And we host monthly faculty and staff luncheons. Family and community engagement. We present opportunities to increase parental and involvement and engagement. We host monthly parent night, monthly community activities where the community come in, provide services to teachers and students. We report to the community, parents, and adopters the successes, deficiencies, and needs of the schools. And we allow supporters and motivator, motivational speakers to come in and speak with our students. Update on our P sixteen and site council. They provide monthly services and incentives to teachers and students. They provide monetary donations, assist in the beautification of the school, volunteered with events at the school, and they also adopted and sponsored students. Our student ADA for month six was ninety-five point thirty-five percent and our staff ADA is ninety-six percent. For external providers, we receive services from Green Educational Group. They provide services to our ninth grade math teachers in an effort to assist with building teacher capacity, increase their content level, and improve classroom management. They also assisted algebra teachers by, who were preparing students by reteaching and participating in co-teaching activities and introducing the teachers to calculator strategies that helped the students, twenty-four percent of our seniors, pass the Algebra One State Assessment in December. Also, as a result of the services, the ninth grade teachers Also, as a result of the services, the ninth-grade teachers' math pedagogy improved significantly. Our funds, Title I funds, part of our funds are used to pay salaries for the interventionists. We have a graduation coach and partial salary for our CNI assistant principal. Our 1003A funds, we plan to use towards professional development opportunities, to purchase technology, purchase online programs and text banks, and to pay for external services from, pay for external provider services. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Is that it, Dr. Murray?
That's it, ma'am.
That's it?
That is.
That's it. Well, um...
It's just been so great hearing from the principals. I have been educated and so encouraged and I hate that you've had to spend your day educating children and parents and then educate the board till 9 o'clock at night, but please know how much we appreciate your leadership and always welcome the opportunities from here from you. It just helps us do a better job. So, thank you, thank you so much, principals. We appreciate you.
If I may add to your comments there, I noticed that there was a commonality in each of the reports and that commonality was, number one, the challenges that principals and teachers are faced with. And of course, number two, the building of relationships with the students, because if the students are going to succeed, there has to be a relationship there between the teacher and the students, you know? So, I noticed that about the reporting and it is, it was really encouraging to see the progress that has been made. And I personally want to congratulate, salute all of the principals, the teachers, because this is a hard job, you know? It's a hard job. I haven't been out of it that long. But it is a hard job. But it's the kind of job where good teachers have a special calling. We've been called to do the job, not because of the money we are paid, but because we want to make a difference in the lives of these young people. So, just want to congratulate you.
Thank you.
Well said. Thank you, Dr. Hilliard.
Okay. I think now we are, let me look at the, we are right here. Information action items and, okay, Cheryl and...
Thank you, Ms. Hilliard. Dr. Harrison, Dr. Murray, members of the board, I present to you the monthly financial report for the month ended February 28, 2018. This includes your statement of fund balance, your budget status report, your cash flow report, and also your bank reconciliation report. I do want to draw your attention to the fact that the district maintenance fund 1120 in your statement of fund balance report did have an ending fund balance in February of $37.7 million and that is reflective of our first round of our tax money that is coming from our Avalon taxes. So, it appears that we are pretty much on trend for what we are seeing in Avalon tax collections so far. We will have another check that'll post for the month of March and I'll let you know where we are at that point.
Thank you.
Dr. Harrison, I move that we accept the monthly financial report as presented.
We have a second?
I second.
It has been moved and seconded.
Can I ask a quick question before we vote? Do we have an update on the AG opinion regarding the granting of days to the classified staff?
Excellent.
Not for the one that I, that I'd sent to them.
We do for the one that I sent, Dr. Seaback. We got it in, I think, right around spring break. And on the first question about adding hours to the classified staff days, our payment of those days, granting, I'm sorry, granting additional leave so that the staff could, the classified staff could not feel the doc, if they were going to be docked or the loss of leave, because we had already paid. The AG does not, the Attorney General's Office does not opine on past action, so that question was not answered. The question about whether or not the additional hour that the teachers work could count as one day cumulative over the course of time to make up that extra day that they're missing, the Attorney General's Office said that the board would have to look at whether or not that was reasonable to do so and would have to make a factual determination to see if the additional hours calculated into a full day so that their contract would be fulfilled. And I will send you all that opinion over the email.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion. Are there other comments? All right, if, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, we move to the consent agenda items. And again, Ms. Cheryl and Miller.
Thank you again, Ms. Hilliard, Dr. Harrison, Dr. Murray, members of the board. I present to you consent agenda items finance with the exception of item E, which is the default for the 16-section disagreement between JPS and Walker Investment Properties. The 16-section committee met on today and Walker Investment Properties has paid all due and owing rent, including a re-aging fees. So, they are, we are going to recommend that that be pulled. And also, item H, approval of the formal bids for upgrades and improvements at Hughes and South Jackson Field, we are requesting that that item be pulled at this point as well. Other than that, I present to you items A, B, C, D, F, G, and I.
Okay. Are there questions regarding the items, any of the other items?
Um...
Yes.
I'm not, yes, ask your question.
Mm-hmm.
Did you say I, Cheryl and...
No. I to be approved, yes.
Yeah, would you name them again? A, B, C, D?
F, G, and I. And I is the approval of the teacher's salary scale.
Dr. Harrison, that's on an updated agenda that we received here.
Right, okay, so it's I instead of H. Okay, yes, thank you.
It's not showing up on our online agenda.
Oh, it's not on the...
Thank you.
So, I is the salary scale?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
And I would like to ask and I guess point out, this approval of the teacher's salary scale is actually an increase in pay for our zero-to-five.
It is and strategically with my counterparts in the area, I looked at their salary scales for those specific steps and those that certificate level. And that puts us slightly ahead of Hines, but it puts us quite a bit ahead of Clinton, Rattus, I mean Clinton and Rankin and Pearl. So, we hope that because that zero-to-five year is where we want to target our teachers to stay, that we hope that this will be a greater center for Saturday, hopefully, now that people will hear about this. If this is approved, then we'll come on out for, for the job fair on Saturday.
Wonderful. Okay, are there other questions, comments?
I move that we accept the consent agenda items as presented under finance.
I second.
It has been moved and seconded that we would accept the consent agenda items as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have, motion passed.
Thank you.
Okay. Under consent agenda items, general, item A, Ms. Sandra Lyons. Is that it? Okay. 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 Just a second. Okay. All right, so that is Mr. McCracken.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We present to you, first of all, good evening. We present to you our request for approval for the final contract adjustment change order, partial roof replacement for Timelon Elementary School and Cywell Middle School. That is a deduct change order. These two projects, this particular project or these schools received, held damage during the March 2013 storm and the projects, there were various areas of the school was damaged, but the majority of the heavy areas were damaged at Cywell School, which was the gymnasium. The full structural, I mean roofing system was damaged. And also, the north addition wing at Timelon was damaged severely. And those areas were the most severe of those two schools. And also, this is a part of the standard 1330 correction for the CAP program. And we also, this is in part in terms of all the leaks that was reported and where we were cited for those leaks and this corrected that particular problem. These funds are available and the deduct is $3,984. So, that changed the contract. The original contract was $351,000. With the deduct, it brings the total down to $347,016. So, that is a deduct alternate, which we were, and this comes out of contingency fund for that particular project that was not used.
Okay. Are there questions? Comments? Could we get a motion?
I move that we accept the final contract adjustment change as presented by Mr. McCracken.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we will accept the adjustments in the contract as presented by Mr. McCracken. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have it, thank you. Okay. Um, approval of the Mississippi Employee Assisted Housing Teacher Program loan. Okay, and it's Ms. Lyons.
Good evening to Dr. Murray, Dr. Harrison, members of the board. The administration asks for the approval of the Mississippi Employer Assistance Housing Teacher Program Loan Agreement. That's included in your board material.
Is there discussion? May we have a motion, please?
I move that we accept the Mississippi Employer Assisted Housing Teacher Program as presented by Ms. Lyons.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we will accept the proposal as presented by Ms. Lyons. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, opposeds? None? Thank you. The motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Lyons.
Thank you.
Dr. Murray?
Good evening, excuse me, good evening. We're requesting approval of a memorandum of understanding with Bailey Education Group and Jackson Public Schools for support of our F schools.
May we have a motion, please?
I would like to say the board appreciates the information provided to help us better understand how our vendors are serving our principals and teachers. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Dr. Lockett. This is a question Dr. Murray had for you. Could you just share a little bit about any of the provisions that are included in this contract if performance measures are not met?
Yes, let me, Dr. Murray, if you could address this. Let me ask Dr. Murray to come up. He worked very closely with the contract, so he can outline that for you.
All right, we have, good evening again. We outlined some very specific goals within the contract and as suggested and recommended by the Council of Great City Schools, we place some accountability clauses in there. One that I remember is that if the performance goals are not met, the vendor has to return 20-day, 20% of their contracted days per school back to the district. So, on average, that will mean if they don't meet a, the performance goals at that school, on average, they will give four days back. And it is written that if they meet the performance goals or move the school to a D or higher, of course, that's how they would basically be paid. So, that's some of the things that are in there as it relates to the accountability clauses.
No, thank you. And my understanding is that these, these services will be covered by Title II funds, is that correct?
Yes.
Part of our plan?
Yes, Title II funds for professional development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? Motion, please?
I move that we, so, sorry, Dr. Harrison.
Well, I was going to move that we accept the Bailey contract.
And I'll second that.
It has been moved and seconded that we will accept the Bailey contract as presented. Are there, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Motion pass. Okay. Um, all right, the next agenda item is consent, approval of staff personnel matters. So, Ms. Lyons.
Good evening again to Dr. Murray, Dr. Harrison, members of the board. The administration asks for the approval of staff personnel matters as listed in board material.
Discussion? May we have a motion, please?
I move that we accept the staff recommendation personnel matters. It's brought to us by Ms. Lyons.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we will accept the report coming from Ms. Lyons. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion?
Thank you.
Passes. Thank you. Ms. Miller?
Thank you again. Good evening. I present on behalf of Consent Agenda Items Finance the approval of the 2018-2019 proposed academic calendar. I would like to highlight that this, the proposed calendar does include a fall break day, which is October 8th, and also a parent-teacher conference day, which is October 15th. Also indicated, again, another parent-teacher conference day in February that will give us an additional inclement weather designated day if it's needed. And also, note, please noted that the graduation exercises in order to accommodate the, to ensure the students are receiving the 180 days of instruction that is required, plus that we get the days in for parent-teacher conference and the break days, that graduation will be moved now back to our dates after Memorial Day, which is what we traditionally have been able to do. We wanted to make sure that we could accommodate, although this year, you know, we did have to move graduation exercises, we are anticipating that the next year's... We are anticipating that the next year's nineteenth graduation will be back at the Coliseum.
This year, it's at Jackson State?
Yes, ma'am, it's at Jackson State this year because the Coliseum was not available for the date since we had to move it. And what's unique about the Coliseum is those of us that graduate there, it's usually us, Madison, UMC, we all are on the calendars for like ten or fifteen years out, and so once we lose a date, once we change a date, we lose it. And so, we were not able to get back in to our normal dates, and so, I'll keep working every year to try to move us back as early as we can, but this, this, the nineteenth calendar does propose us going back to after Memorial Day.
Okay.
This calendar does give us the potential option to add more minutes per, to the day, possibly with guidance and approval from MDE?
Well, we'll be able to add more instructional time.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, we'll be able to add more instructional time that will allow us to not run into the situation that we did prior to the holiday, meaning having to make up a day because we missed instructional time, so...
We're all aware that we need to be mindful of not getting in a situation that we were in this year.
Right, yeah, I just want to affirm that as well. We want to take every opportunity to be sure we always have adequate instructional time, build in some extra.
Okay, are there other comments? We have a motion to accept the calendar.
I'll move to accept the calendar.
I second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we will accept the calendar for the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen academic year. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion pass. Okay, other business? Any other business? Okay. Any consideration to hold an executive session?
Are you serious?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Are you serious?
All right.
It's only one minute.
Yeah, one minute.
Okay, could we have a, have a motion to, again, we thank you for hanging in here. Yes. The meeting is now adjourned.
We got to have a...
Please the meeting to consider convening an executive session.
I move that we close the meeting to consider having an executive session.
A second.
Okay. Motion is that the meeting will be moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, colleagues.